Okay, we're going to call the Santa Barbara City Council meeting of December 11th, 2007, to order, and I need to apologize to you folks for starting late, but our ordinance committee ran over. Will you please stand to say the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Council, agency member Barnwell.
Here.
Falcone.
Horton.
Here.
House.
Schneider.
Here.
Williams.
Mayor.
Chair Bloom.
Here. Okay, any changes to the agenda today?
Yes, Madam Mayor, or at least maybe want to put folks on notice. On item 14, which is the memorandum of understanding with the Firefighters Association, they were unable to ratify their memorandum of understanding, and so we're going to ask, when you come up on that item, that it be continued to January the 8th.
Okay.
So if somebody was in the audience, I wanted them to be aware of that.
Okay, that's number 14. Okay, thank you. Then we will go to public comment. Let me get this set there. And our first speaker will be Ken Locke, followed by Rob Pearson and Barbara Allen.
My name is Kenneth Locke. From my perspective, I could educate this community in relation to art and its history. In the newspaper today, I don't know what the problem is with this community, but it's not coming on board in relation to what I'm bringing to the table, in relation to what art is. In the paper today, the museum director mentioned the whole concept of keeping the children above the learning curve. I'm sorry to say that art education is way off track right now, and there isn't a learning curve. It's more of a dumbing down kind of situation, maintaining this status quo, this economy. Art right now is somewhere along the line art began, and then it became mingled with capitalism, and I'm sorry to say that that mingling has totally corrupted it, and it's become an institution based on the fact that the dollar amounts. It's not about education anymore. There's no focus on -- I'm sorry to say that the museum director does not understand the abstract art movement of the 20th century, the meaning of it, why we've had it. I'm sorry to say, again, he does not have knowledge in relation to one avant-garde painter, in relation to another, in relation to the last one. I'm claiming to be the last one, so if he has this knowledge, he's going to have to get it from me. And if he doesn't get it from me, then it's kind of a no-brainer from my perspective is that, again, his perspective in relation to education is relatively meaningless. Today, tomorrow, 1,000 years from today, it just continues. It's a continuum type of situation. Again, I'm here to educate the community in relation to art, and I'm just trying to do that job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rob Pearson and Barbara Allen.
Madam Mayor, members of council and agency board members, I'm here as the executive director of the Santa Barbara City Housing Authority. It gives me great pleasure to present to your council and board yet another award for our El Correo development that the housing authority completed a year ago, last September. It has received the national award in program innovation from the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. I'm also pleased to say that this is the third national award that the housing authority has received from the professional association that includes some 21,000 housing and redevelopment officials across the country. We received one in 1995 for Sarah House, and in 2004 for the completion of Casa de las Fuentes. El Correo is a great success for all of us. I want to thank the council and the agency for the $1.8 million you put into the project. The balance of the cost of the development, which totaled $10 million, came from the low-income housing tax credit program. With me today is Barbara Allen, one of our commissioners, who wanted to say a few words. I also want to take a moment and thank your tremendous staff. Stephen Falstich is here, and Dave Gustafson, they did outstanding work on this, as did the planning staff, in getting us to the approvals to make this project happen. Barbara?
Madam Mayor. Members of the council, this is a time for thank yous, and I would like to acknowledge two of our management staff, people who are here today who were very much a part of El Correo, Skip Sidbansky, and on my far left, and Rob Fredericks. And also, two commissioners also here with me, Cheryl Rogers and Mary Johnson DeLeón. For a time of thank yous, we thank you for your ongoing support. Without your support and forward-thinking, these projects would not happen. And I think at this time, it's appropriate for me to say thank you on behalf of the 61 residents of El Correo. You've made a huge difference in their lives. When I sit down for Thanksgiving dinner with them, and someone tells me they have hope for the first time, that's what it's all about. So I'd love to present these to you. One is for the city of Santa Barbara, and the other is for the redevelopment agency. We're very proud, and thank you again. Okay, we'll let Brenda pick them up, but that's very wonderful. It's -- I think we should have a lot of applause for them, so let's do that. I was just going to make a speech, but [laugh]. It's just wonderful to think of what's going on over there, because we know that many of the people who are living there, I think 11 of them now, have jobs, and people have moved from there into housing, and people are saving up for housing, and I just think it's -- what a great thing. So thank you so much for doing that. Thanks. Okay, Philip Walker will be followed by, and thanks for coming, Bob Handy.
Mayor and city council, I'd like to continue the thanks to Mr. Barnwell for his service. I'm sure he'll do well, whatever his future holds. Sometimes it's good to have a change. It's happened several times in my life, and I've been made better for it. Also offer my congratulations to Ms. Schneider and Doss Williams, too. My concern today, as you've seen, it's only rained 0.69 of one inch. It's not extreme drought anymore. The NOAA drought monitor indicates it as being exceptional drought. Lake Kachuma is drawing down faster than I've ever seen in my 40 years around here. It's unprecedented. Even with the state water inflow, it's a whole new ballgame. I'll speak more about it next week. Like, when I ran into former Mayor Shiva Lodge post her service as mayor, she said, "Yes, Phil, I feel the populace of this city sort of unfairly blamed me for what happened during the previous drought." So it's good to be on top of things. And it's also interesting to remember that only 18 months ago, Lake Kachuma spilled. It was up with the splashboards to 200,000 acre-feet capacity. A year before, it was a very lengthy spill. Within, I would say, toward the end of this water year, or the early start of the summer, we'll be back down to the 100,000 acre-feet action points. So it's a tremendous concern, and I see it growing every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Handy. While Bob's coming up, did you have something, Ms. Williams?
Sure, I was going to wait for announcements, but I thought it was relevant that, at the last COEM meeting, we did discuss, because of the rapid drawdown in the last year, that if we had another year like this, we would have to incur 20 percent mandatory cuts to deliveries from Kachuma. And so we're talking about it just in January, instead embrace 10 percent voluntary cuts to deliveries, and that's something that I'm hoping that staff will talk about next week at the 6:00 PM session, which will be the Water Supply Report.
Right, which would -- that's why we're having that.
So if viewers want to watch that, they can do so at 6:00 PM.
On December 18th. Okay, thank you. Mr. Handy will be followed by Wayne Scholes. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Armstrong.
Right now, the Water Supply Report's the last item on the afternoon agenda, rather than at 6:00.
Okay, so four-ish, 3:30, four-ish.
So four-ish.
Okay. Mr. Handy.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Members of the council, my name is Bob Handy, and I am one of the directors of the California Democratic Party, the chair of Veterans Caucus for the California Democratic Party, and the chair of Veterans United for Truth. And I say that because I am not speaking for them, but I'm speaking for myself. I spent the day making notes as to what I wanted to say here today, and basically, I understand what you -- on the 19th, you will be discussing the war in Iraq. I don't believe that any of you have a direct relative, a son, a daughter, or grandchild in the military. So what I'm saying is that when George W. Bush told the country to go shopping after 9/11, he didn't take into consideration that many of our young people would be going off to fight his war. We have nearly killed 4,000 American troops, and estimated a million Iraqis. The war, we got into it with a lie. We are almost into a war with Iran over a lie. I would ask you, on the 19th, when you discuss the war, that you take the position that the war is immoral and illegal. If you read the Constitution, which I have done recently, which was the first time since the 6th grade, Article 6, Paragraph 2 of the Constitution clearly says that all treaties that the United States enters into are the supreme law of the land. After World War II, we entered into the United Nations Treaty. We have ignored the United Nations Treaty. We also entered the Geneva Convention. Both of these, according to the Constitution, are the law of the land. We are in a war that I believe is not only immoral, but illegal. And I would therefore ask you, each of you, to, if you take this up on the 19th, to support the Constitution, that you have all taken the oath to defend. This young lady, the deputy clerk, has taken it. The people who collect the money at your kiosk at the, you know, at the parking garages take the oath to defend the Constitution. Those words have meaning. So therefore, I would ask you to support bringing our troops home and ending the war. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Scholes will be followed by Billy Godwin.
Hi, today I'm here to keep a promise I made to a inspector for the Santa Barbara Fire Department. And last week, during the big swell, I was down at Shoreline Park, like I am most days, and I was standing with a group of people, and inspector from the fire department happened to drive up, and he got out and was looking around. We'd mentioned to him that there were 14 cars at that time parked illegally on the right-hand side of Shoreline Drive, and people were double parking and triple parking in the parking lot, which meant people could not come in or out of the parking lot. And it was basically gridlock on Shoreline. One of the neighbors, who frequently faxes you, Mayor Dennis, he mentioned to the investigator, "Why don't you call the police department and tell them this is creating a public safety hazard, because you wouldn't be able to get an emergency vehicle in through the area if an emergency happened, a medical emergency or a fire broke out." And he also mentioned that he was having the same problem on Santa Cruz at the Circle. The investigator for the fire department held up his radio and said, "We can't even communicate with the police department with our radios." Everybody questioned about that, and he repeated again, "We cannot communicate with the police department with our radios." Now, what that means is we're in the same situation that the battalion commanders spoke on television about during the fires in San Diego and Orange County, when they came on television and complained that they had spoken repeatedly for years to the different agencies, the state and local agencies, about being able to communicate with each other during emergencies. What this does is it puts every single fireman, every single policeman, and every single emergency worker at risk, along with the public and property. So I promised him I would come down here and mention that. Along with that, I explained to him that two weeks prior to that, a city employee had come out to Shoreline Park, and they were tracking the new $1,633 garbage cans with GPS satellite technology. So they would know exactly where every single garbage can was in that park to who-knows-how-many fractions of an inch. These things are bolted into concrete. It's not like they get up at night and walk around. But the city is using GPS satellite tracking to track garbage cans, but the police and the fire department cannot communicate with each other. I hope all of you understand that that seems like it's ass-backwards. If not, that's probably why we still have that situation, and it needs to be corrected. The city has been declared a disaster area about five times since I've lived here in the last 35 years, and that's the last thing we need, is people be killed or injured or have extensive loss of property because of lack of communication. The other thing I'd like to mention is that Chief Cam Sanchez has instructed his police officers to not bother to book certain criminals when they're arrested, so that the city can save $150 in reimbursement to the county for booking fees. I found that out because I had a person pull a knife on me about five months ago, when I interrupted him and his girlfriend having sex out in the open in broad daylight at the turnaround at Santa Cruz, before you get to the stairs. Dan Raymer from the district attorney's office told me that, yes, it was Cam Sanchez that told him this. I filed a complaint. I called the police department. The only reason I wasn't stabbed by this person is because I didn't allow him to. He originally wanted to beat me up with his fist, and that didn't scare me enough. So he went back, and he searched through his pack, and he grabbed a knife, and he came at me and told me he was going to F. me up and cut me up. Luckily, there was--
Mr. Scholes, you need to wind up.
Okay, I'll finish this next week if I can. But the problem is, is they handcuffed him, then they released him. This is a person that pulled a knife, threatened me, came at me, and I'm sure it's happening with other people, and the police are told to release him. To do what? Maybe go pull a knife on somebody else? Go pull a gun on somebody else? That's ridiculous also. So I'll be back next week, like Paul Harvey, with the rest of the story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy Godwin will be the last speaker.
Mayor Bloom, city council, thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I'm a homeless Vietnam veteran. I am also a homeless activist and advocate, and I would like to speak on two issues, if I may, and I will also speak at future ones, so I'm just going to outline a bare-bones thing here. There's two issues that I would like to just briefly touch on. One is the 10-year plan to end chronic homelessness. I have studied this plan, Mr. Roger, who was planned, pretty carefully, and thought about it quite a bit. There's one portion of it that states that they're going to try to have 500 units of homeless SRO, single residential occupancy housing, ready within a three-year period. Now, in order to fulfill that, they're going to have to co-opt at least some other buildings, I believe, because building them from scratch takes so long. I mean, the Correo building and the one that they're doing over by the Lono Club is really excellent, but I don't think that's going to come up to what they want to fulfill for the plan. What we have come up with from the homeless community itself is that we would like to renovate and make a community project for the whole entire community, the California Hotel on Lower State Street, which means, now, I know it needs a lot of work, but I do renovation, I'm a renovation specialist, before I became homeless, anyway. I'm a joiner carpenter. And so I'm putting out an intent that we're going to try to accomplish this, and I would like to get some sort of permission and see what kind of backing we can get from whatever quarter to do this. The second issue that I would like to touch on is--
You have 20 seconds left.
The President's race is coming up, and so far, all we've seen is a lot of clowns in a three-ring circus up in Washington. Santa Barbara has the ability to field a president and a vice presidential candidate, and so we're also declaring that intent. There is a president's candidate named Dr. Wu, who is a speech doctor, and he also has a vice president, which is a female Latino. And that, I would like to speak more on next time. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor. Ms. Schneider.
Just to clarify on some of the comments about the 10-year plan, since I'm on the board, the 500, it's not units, they're beds, so it does include rehabbing current buildings. It's not all coming from scratch, just to make that clear. And the governing board is putting together the first round of data, and county-wide, about where those beds are coming from. And actually, we are moving right along, according to what the plan's saying, and hopefully, within three years, county-wide, we will have another 500 beds from all over the place. So you're more than welcome to participate. If you want to contact my office about how to get involved in the 10-year plan. And on Thursday at 10:30 at the 6:30 Garden Street is our monthly city-county homeless advisory committee. You're welcome to come to that as well. Thank you.
Okay, good. Consent calendar, does any -- I don't think we have anything to read by title, do we? Okay. Do we have any -- anybody want to take anything off? Or can I have a motion? Number two?
Yeah.
Okay, number two. Go ahead and read that.
Item number two, manager's special assignment pay.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Well, I just, when I first heard this, I was, we were, I was told that it was for two individuals in particular, and I was okay with that, but I kind of feel like this is blanket authority, and so I just wanted to kind of get an idea from the city administrator why doing this as opposed to bringing to us the individuals that you do want to raise pay for.
Madam Mayor and councilmember Williams, I expect we'll probably do this once or twice a year. We could bring them to you individually. We just felt this was an easier way to do it. We currently have an acting pay provision in our municipal code and our personnel rule. So, for example, when we move somebody into an acting mode, we do that administratively. For example, when Mr. Casey moved into the acting public works director, and we just felt this was similar to that. If the council wants to act on each one of these, we can. Again, I don't expect it will happen that often. We do expect at some point that we'll probably have discussions, at least with the supervisory group, and try and do something similar, because we think this is a good practice for part of our succession planning and giving people additional assignments, although I don't expect it's going to happen very often, because it's, they're pretty unique kinds of circumstances.
I guess my feeling is that for Bob Samario or for someone else, that this is something that we should do, but to do it as a blanket authority, it, I don't know, especially after doing such long MOU discussions, it just doesn't strike me as a good idea to do, because it sort of essentially creates two classes of employees, one in which they can get a sort of a raise when one person feels that's appropriate, and another group of employees that we need to argue about it over six months to do. And I think that's just not okay. So I don't know how to handle that, whether we should put a, you know, just do it for Samario and for the other employee that you had in particular, or do it where, you know, there's a limitation of doing this for one employee a year or something like that, because normally, it just comes to us as part of a package of pay increases, and I kind of don't feel like--
The other option I can provide is, when we do it, I can send the council notice so you see how frequently it happens in the circumstances.
Ms. Falcone.
Thank you very much. I had the same reaction when I read it, and I certainly don't begrudge the employee, the manager, who takes on additional work, especially, I'm very familiar with the incidents with Bob Samario, who's finance, second-in-command, and he's also now running the solid waste division, which is very large, coming very large, and it's interesting.
You need to turn on your microphone.
It is on. Is it not? Well, then I'll, hm, then I'll go over here. Tony! At any rate, I had the same feeling when I read this, that I have no problems with the issue of the folks that you want to do it with now, but there is, I share Mr. Williams' concern about having folks taking on more responsibility. Of course, they should be paid for it, but how often that happens and under what circumstances is not only a workload and a work-division assignment, which is your purview, Mr. Armstrong, absolutely, but it also is a finance issue. And to look at things as they happen, I think is a much better place for us all to be in. So if it's not going to happen all that frequently, then it couldn't possibly be very onerous to bring those to us, and I'm not sure that you're even asking for our okay in this circumstance with respect to Mr. Samario, but to the notification that another employee is going to be doing some other kind of position and is going to be compensated up to 20 percent of their current pay for that, I think is a finance issue that we should at least be notified of and aware of, so that we know, you know, who's doing what around and about. And so I would be happy to forward this on, but not in a, not the way it's presented. I think that bringing it to us in some way is, I think, all but responsible. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I read this differently. I believe that this is pay for work. This is additional duties. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
So this is not a, essentially, it's not increasing a scale of pay, it's actually adding additional duties for which those, that work is being compensated.
Yeah, and the duties would be something that's well above and beyond the normal course of the duties. For example, an example that we use, Mr. Samario is the assistant finance director, and I've asked him for a period of up to two years to take on supervising the solid waste division of public works, because we had some issues there we wanted to deal with, and it also helps broaden his experience. So it's not like asking him to do the, you know, manage the financial management project or something like that. And we're seeing a few examples of this, where we're asking folks to act well above and beyond the normal course of their duties. From the financial standpoint, if it did require additional appropriations, we'd have to come to the council for authorization to spend it.
This is within budget--
This would have to be within the budget.
Okay, so it's within budget for each department, and it's a decision made based on additional assignments, and the alternative would be to hire somebody else to do those assignments, but you're using existing employees without having to go out and hire somebody else at this time.
Yeah, and also, in this situation, is we had a vacancy that occurred, and we don't expect it to fill it for a while.
You know, I thank you very much. I feel very comfortable with supporting this today, and I think that it's the kind of thing that gets us out of micromanaging, and I think that it would be a useful tool and ultimately, very responsible way to use the funds that are within our budget. If it exceeds budget, you would be back and talking to us separately, so I can support this today.
Okay, Mr. Barnwell.
I agree with Mr. Williams. I agree with Mr. Williams.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
I think one thing to make a distinction here is that this is just for management, right? People who are not currently under a bargaining unit, and so they would not necessarily be part of any kind of negotiations when it comes to this kind of pay grade and pay category. So the only way to do it is, well, not the only way, but this is one way to make that happen. It's very different than during the negotiation period. I think as long as there's not a, two things, two things come to, a couple of things come to mind. One is that they're outside the negotiation process, because they're not part of a bargaining unit. Another one is the, looking at the future in terms of finding current staff to take on new roles in a position, when we're looking at the average age of our employment being in the high 40s, low 50s, in terms of their age and how close they are to retirement, and trying to look at recruiting within, when creating more skill sets, is a good way to incentivize other managers to do so. And if this doesn't have a budget impact, if it did, I would absolutely agree. It needs to come to us for that kind of, for that kind of review, to make sure that that's appropriate. But if it's within the budget, and it's just trying to incentivize someone to take on above and beyond duties, beyond whatever their normal scope of the position, I just think that's good management.
Okay, Mr. Horton.
When I read it as chair of finance, I was concerned that it might indicate a shift in departmental direction or duties that would be at least worthwhile letting us know about. I think it makes total sense, and I have no problem with either the individuals involved or the principal involved, but it does suggest that there's a change and something fairly significant going on at that level. And for that reason, okay, in this case, it happens to be within budget, but the next time, it might not be. And, you know, at least speaking from the finance committee's standpoint, I'd like to know-- least speaking from the Finance Committee standpoint, I'd like to know that there's something different going on out there so that we can begin to think about it. But I'm okay with an advanced notification if there's some way of handling that.
Okay. Would you, would it be of interest to the council? Everybody's spoken now. And I'm interested in allowing Mr. Armstrong to do his job as an administrator and carrying out the management of the, of the city. But would it be of interest to the council if when this work, when he wants to do this, he would bring it to the Finance Committee? Is that, Mr. Horton? I'm going to ask you directly, just because you're Chair of the Finance Committee.
That's fine, or just copy in the council. Either way is fine with me.
And copy the whole council? I mean, so all of us know?
Yeah. That would be fine with me.
Okay, maybe we could add that to the motion, if there is a motion.
Well, Madam Mayor-
To approve this with the caveat that it be brought by memo to all of us and to the Finance Committee.
I'd be happy to.
Ms. Falcone?
Oh, yeah, I'd be happy to.
Hello. It comes and goes. It's, it's the funny one. There is, it moves around periodically. I got it today. I would be more than happy with that, just a notification that it's happening. I think that the idea is a good idea, all the succession planning that you're planning to do. Not, you know, it's certainly not our purview to, to get into who does what at a management level, but to know about it. And the financial impacts, I think, is just something that couldn't possibly be very burdensome. And it'd just help us all to understand what is the complete picture of the city. So I'm happy to make that, that motion to add the language. And then if with that understanding, this item has been amended, then I would be happy to move the entire consent council with that amendment. But how would you like to do it? Let's do one at a time. Let's amend this one first, so. You want to do it separately? Yeah. Okay. Then I'm happy to move the language, that, a notification to full council, when this activity is engaged in, be made to this recommend, to this staff recommendation. Okay. And if you add and take into the Finance Committee, I'm with you. I'm fine, taking it to the Finance Committee. I don't even need that, but I'll add it. Okay. I just think they need to know. Okay. Mr. Williams.
I think this is good. And here's the reason why. Because this is a departure, and this is essentially us ceding a considerable amount more authority to the city administrator. And we might think that that's fine, given the current city administrator and current practice. But that doesn't, not necessarily mean that that should be true of all, you know, subsequent city administrators. And at least having this by memo would allow us to be able to revoke that authority at any time if the council saw, saw fit. And I, I think that's important.
Okay. Then let's have a, let's have a vote on item number two, as amended. Did you get the amendment? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we need a consent calendar.
Can I tick off number three briefly?
Item three?
Yeah.
Okay. Item three. Brenda.
Item number three, increase to purchase order issued to Donna M. Grundy for election consulting services.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to pull this out to commend the city clerk staff and the administrative director who's doing above and beyond the call of duty right now as we speak, Mr. Lopez, overseeing the elections and staying within budget. I don't need to vote on this separately, but I just want to put that out there, that, that you stayed within budget even with this extra work that needed to be done. So congratulations. That was it.
Okay.
Move consent calendar of item two.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, report from the ordinance committee?
And for the record, Mr. Lopez screwing in the microphone is not an extra duty for which will be compensated.
I thought he had that miscellaneous duties on his description. Okay. Ms. Falcone.
Well, you've got another one right there. It says, report from the ordinance committee.
Ah, ordinance committee.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, I haven't turned my pages yet. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Today at the ordinance committee, we met at 12:30, and we discussed the neighborhood preservation ordinance in terms of updates and amendments. There were 12 of them specifically enumerated, and we had a good discussion about several of them. Some were fairly perfunctory. We did agree to send them all up to council with some conversation that will be a little more specific, some details will be more specific when it comes to council. And hopefully, we can iron out the concerns that were heard at ordinance committee today, up at council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Horton.
Madam Mayor, we met at 12:30 today. We discussed some options for a piece of land the city owns and the redevelopment agency annual report. Both will be moved to council at a future date.
Okay, good. Item 11, please.
Item number 11, Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission Marketing Program.
Okay. You're going to sit over there? Does that work? Brenda? We have brown packets for us.
They look like ancient tomes of knowledge.
Really? Were they make, made of stone or something? Okay, Ms. Yes. Okay. It's Janega Dykes. You know, there's a, there's a button on the side. They always seem to, on the side of the mic. Maybe there isn't. Okay. I think we forgot to pay our bill. Electric bill. Yeah. Turning it off one at a time. Are you, do you have it now?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kathy Janega Dykes. I'm president and CEO of the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau and Film Commission. And I want to begin by thanking you for acknowledging the importance of tourism to Santa Barbara's local economy. And I want to share some exciting things that we have in our marketing plan for this coming year. And that surprisingly, our annual marketing efforts are really based on the trends that we are seeing in the marketplace. And it's a marketplace that is continuing to change, as you know, in very, very dramatic ways, presenting us with really a kaleidoscope of, of marketing niches and providing us with some exciting and challenging opportunities to promote tourism, to environmentally aware green tourists, culinary tourists, and film tourists. And other business trends are bringing Santa Barbara now marketing opportunities and challenges that we really have not seen in the last several years. For example, the recent radical decline in the value of the dollar presents us with yet another opportunity, not only to attract Americans who may travel to Europe for vacation, but also now Europeans who are now traveling to the U.S. because of the favorable exchange rate. And on the other hand, certainly the price of the gas at the pump may also become a factor in travel planning, really causing us to look closer to home for our business. For the first time in November of this year, the Bureau organized a 2008 state local and regional tourism forecast meeting. I know some of you attended. And at that meeting, Bruce Bolton, who is Vice President of PKF Consulting, described the Santa Barbara tourism market as a near capacity for occupied room growth, and estimated that the next year's lodging room rate increases will be about 4% to 5%. So for the last three years, one of the major trends, as we all know, in the hospitality industry, both nationally and locally, has been an increase in lodging room rates, increasing hotel revenue for hotel years, and certainly occupancy tax for our local communities. However, this coming year, there are many indications, as we know, that this trend is slowing. The rates in occupancy will continue to go up, but perhaps not as rapidly as, as previous years. But with that said, Santa Barbara's tourism industry continues to remain healthy and a vital part of our economy, as I mentioned earlier. For example, tourism in Santa Barbara County generates more than $1.3 billion annually and certainly brings in $93 million in state and local taxes each year. Very, very important. And as you know, last year I was here at the same time, we launched a whole new brand strategy with really two specific objectives. I'd like to update you on those. One was to create a brand platform that can live on to the future, one that has many, many legs. And we need to ensure that this platform included new technology to deliver our message. We also included the design of a new logo, redesigns of our existing websites, new microsites where everything interactive lives, new podcast tours. This year, we created a new historic red towel walking podcast tour that our visitors can download online and also accompany maps for their visits here in Santa Barbara. And we also have new online and offline advertising campaigns. And again, we accomplished these goals, and we're building on this foundation this year. We're continuing to increase our electronic marketing online, advertising cooperative, cooperative advertising significantly in addition to more themed e-newsletters. The second objective that we had last year was to develop a strong cooperative partner program where we're leveraging our public marketing dollars with private industry. And I'm really pleased to say that we did develop a very strong cooperative campaign. And to date this fiscal year only, we have 40 partners who are sponsors in our print, online, and offline campaign, who are adding additional dollars to our public funds. There's also a lot of good news to report about our tourism marketing efforts and other programs. For example, we are having significant success as we focus attention on Santa Barbara in various ways, adding new facets to our image as American Riviera, the relaxed and classic getaway. We have generated excitement and broad support for our work with the Amgen Professional Bike Tour. They're coming back again in February of this year. We've had a very, very satisfying growth in our conference bookings this year. We continue to highlight our brand, really focusing on Santa Barbara's distinctive and relaxed lifestyle. And again, as I mentioned before, we're going to continue our niche marketing for film and food, adding to it the environmentally green component as well, too. And as a matter of fact, seeds planted two years to grow Santa Barbara's reputation as a culinary destination are really now coming to fruition. Food and wine related stories in just this quarter only was really a leading topic, lending credence and support to our efforts to target those culinary tourists. And this fast-growing interest group is upscale in education and income and spends more money per trip than average, and especially for our food and wine, a perfect match for Santa Barbara. And to add to this mix, the State Tourism Office this year will be adding a brand-new marketing initiative, a food and wine marketing initiative. And we're working very, very closely with them, again, to leverage our public dollars with theirs as well. This year, we're also going to be enhancing our lifestyle promotion by presenting an escape, a retreat from a hectic lifestyle in larger urban areas. We want to show Santa Barbara, show visitors how Santa Barbara can provide cures for the common lifestyle. So for slower months this year, we developed a very catchy internet campaign that shows our hotel and attraction packages. And we have about 32 online. And as you can tell, we're targeting the hard-working, successful consumer who may be stuck in L.A. traffic and perhaps is suffering from grid lock jaw, which is, the symptom is a constant grinding of the teeth during rush hour traffic, resulting in a permanent squall, a squall. And then the ah package from Hotel Oceana is certainly the cure. Or how about those who are suffering from three iron deficiency, which is an inability to show, enjoy 18 holes of golf due to snowy or rain winter weather. So the cure is the double your pleasure hotel and golf package from the City of Santa Barbara's Park and Recreation Department and packaging with the Lemon and Orange Tree Hotels. So these are just a sample of the different cure packages that we are using, again, to try to encourage visitors to come during the winter period. The opportunity where we really can see some growth in our occupancy and our transient occupancy tax as well, too. And this month, and we have a, a copy of the magazine in your packets as well, Santa Barbara is featured in Hemispheres Magazine, which is United's in-flight publication. We have a 35-page spread, which is really quite phenomenal. And I think what's really most important is that not only we're members of the tourism industry supporting this piece by advertising it, but we also had advertisers from other members of our business community, including UCSB, City College, Realtors, software companies, the downtown organization, and other communities in the city throughout the county as well, too. So if you are flying in United this December, please remember to go ahead and take that out and show everyone else on the plane how great Santa Barbara is. And we in the Santa Barbara industry frequently quote stats about the impact of tourism on the local economy. A local research study updating our tourism data will really be one of our biggest efforts this year. In January, we will be launching a year-long visitor profile study that involves 800 onsite interviews of visitors to our city and our county. And these are very, very thorough intercept interviews, which are going to be held in many locations throughout the county to capture a variety of demographic, trip, and spending data. And we're also, to add to that report, we're going to be gathering more data to more accurately measure the total economic impact of tourism to our community. This final report will include interviews with local residents who have hosted visitors, because that's a big part of our visitor industry as well, hotel and motel operating data, as well as hotel retail and business tax data. And that the results of this study will be an excellent guide for all of our marketing efforts. And it will really show tourism contributions to local area residents and our governments as well, too. And as in previous months and previous, previous years, you're going to continue to receive regular communication from us. We began to distribute monthly marketing e-newsletters to you to showcase some of the new things that you may have not, that have, that have happened in the tourism industry in the previous month. In addition to that, you do receive our quarterly actions reports, as well as signals, signals reports, which showcase the latest tourism data and information about Bureau staff activities. And we will, our marketing results will continue to be measured by our online website activity, hotel bookings, as well as our brochure guides as well, too. The Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau Film and Film Commission has a mission to increase the economic benefits of tourism to our community. And we take this mission statement very, very serious and continue to strive to meet our goals in this year as well as future years. So we again appreciate your support and your understanding. And I now welcome any questions or comments that you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments, Ms. Schneider?
Thank you.
And then Mr. Horton.
Well, this is very cool. I was actually on a plane earlier this month. I came home from New York. So first, you see the three perfect days in New York City. So I was saying, well, what did I do? And what did they say I should do? That was kind of fun. I remember something was in here, and I thought it would be the three perfect days. And I was like, oh, we didn't get the three perfect days. But my goodness, that's nothing compared to what's in here. It's really quite phenomenal. And good timing, too, based on, you know, the challenges we may find in terms of our occupancy, not only in Santa Barbara, but elsewhere, as your tourism forecast says. I'd be curious to know if, after this month, if you see an uptick in your website site hits. You know, because if, because you're in here-
Right.
And your website's in there, or your partner organizations. If, you know, if all of a sudden you see a little increase in, in that activity, it's hard to track why people come to a website.
Right.
But this, this is pretty major. So congratulations to that.
Thank you. And we'll be able to report on that. We do regularly monitor our website reports.
Yeah, I'd love to see that data.
See any bumps and increases in traffic.
Really interesting. So, I mean, you can't, you can't buy this kind of coverage for $1.5 million of our money that we give to SBB. So this was, I mean, it's money well spent, and it comes back in many fold. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Horton.
Well, I get to be the liaison to this group. And that means I get to go to board meetings once a month and eat wonderful warm biscuits and fresh coffee, and listen to a group of very excited and upbeat and optimistic people talk about what they're doing. And this is one of my favorite liaison assignments. And I think the presentation today and what we see in front of us here just shows what a fine job they're doing. And I want to thank you for all your great efforts.
Thank you.
You don't want to share that with the rest of us? Just kind of take turns or anything?
No.
No, okay. All right. Okay. Mr. Burnwell. And then Mr. House.
Well, I wanted to personally thank Ms. Janega Dykes, because I remember when we weren't getting this quality of return on our money. And we asked to be kept posted on all the changes and how you're doing your outreach and how you're measuring your data, et cetera, et cetera. And you've met all of those requests of ours by tenfold. And I think it shows. I think there's, you've raised your, your, your profile enough so that the people in the community actually know, when you say Conference and Visitors Bureau, they actually know what that is. And so I want to compliment you. I think you've done an excellent job. And I'm going to read this very carefully. And I love the witticisms associated with your afflictions. Did you sit down with some coffee and two or three people and come up with that? Or how did, some of the biscuits and coffee that Mr. Horton was talking about?
Our advertising agency was tasked to come up with a, develop an off-season campaign. And they probably sat with coffee.
It was well done. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, and Mr. House?
We're going to have a lot of fun with those things. Those are great. They're really funny.
Thank you.
All right, well, we need to get you in some stand-up situation where we can get you on Channel 18, running down this list or something. That would be pretty cute. So just a few things here. The car-free aspect to me is kind of an important piece of it, recognizing that part of our near-term horizon issue is the freeway construction that's going to begin. And an awful lot of our visitors come from the south and come by car. And so some of us here from the city are going to go down to the Los Anjos meeting tomorrow for the rail corridor from Los Angeles to San Luis Obispo and talk to them about how we can get better rail service. And I was really gratified to see that that's going to be part of the plan. And I really hope that you can ramp that up and encourage that. And I'm wondering, in that same light, how are we equipped to handle tour buses or groups that are coming from out of the area? And again, altogether, that really reduces traffic and brings people here who are here to shop and to see the different things that we have. So are we equipped well enough to handle that?
Yes, absolutely. And that's a big part of our marketing outreach as well, too, is working with different tour operators, not only domestically but also internationally, who do bring tour buses up to this area, spend the night, one or two nights, and then continue going up the coast as well, too. I also like to comment on the comment about car-free. Coincidentally, a group, a team from Amtrak is actually meeting here in Santa Barbara. We work very closely with a liaison who's based out of Los Angeles, and we're fortunate that he likes Santa Barbara very much and brought the Western Region managers of Amtrak up here. And so one of my staff members is speaking to them right now about our green tourism program and then the opportunities to work with car-free program here in Santa Barbara as well, too.
Okay, very good. Just a couple more things. When we look at our marketing and we see these beautiful images and this incredible presentation of not just the city of Santa Barbara but our place in this region, it would seem like one of the things that we should be doing cooperatively with you from the city and also from the private side is to make sure that our guests and visitors' experiences match the marketing. And we really, you know, we look pretty good in Hemispheres. And there was another one too recently on another airlines that I saw, and we had a nice little spread in there, too. We look really good. So I don't know where that relationship is or how we can actually really get that right. But when we look at the, down at the waterfront along Cabrillo Boulevard, I mean, it looks pretty great in our images, and it does look good when you get on the ground, but there are some rough edges. And I know our RDA has been working on this, and we're going to be doing an awful lot to the sidewalks, as we're going to discuss even later today. But throughout the whole city, how can we really have it be spruced up and as polished and as great as the marketing? So maybe that's something we can look at as a cooperative effort as we move forward. When I was at the, that forecast that you hosted, Canadians came up as a likely group to come and visit us. Also, we are a destination now, especially with the dollar for folks who don't speak English from all around the world. And so I'd like to ask you about our language services and the amenities we have or don't have for people coming from other parts of the world. How are we equipped for that?
We do have brochures that are translated in different languages right now. And actually, a team just came from one of the largest travel trade shows in the world and was recently held in London, again, promoting Santa Barbara as well. So again, that, we're capitalizing on the opportunities to try to generate more international visitation at this point as well, too. And we just hosted a marketing committee meeting last week, and Canada certainly came up as well, too, and the need to really focus on that audience.
Well, I have a request of you, and that is that you feed back to us what you would say is, would be truly state-of-the-art in terms of physical presence on the street, at our destinations, the historic places, the art museum, the places people like to go, even restaurants and menus. But feedback to us in the city and also to the private sector through the Chamber of Commerce, but what we can do more to make people feel welcome here. I know I really appreciate that when I travel, that people have made that extra effort. And then the last two things. One, how can we be a more visitor-friendly place from a local business perspective? And I'm suggesting that there may be some things you can do with local businesses to help us be as hospitable as we really want to be. This is about hospitality, after all, and you've done a great job. So expanding that public-private partnership piece is critical to me, and that leveraging is very, very important. But just at the lowest level of it, how can, you know, a little sewing machine store or a little, you know, fabric store, I guess I'm emphasizing the textile side of things here all of a sudden. But, you know, how can we be really prepared? You know, I remember there was a real big effort back east where I was raised to say bienvenidos, and we were talking to Canadians. You know, we were really looking for a way to welcome people and to have that be on every interaction we have with folks. But thank you very much for all your effort.
Okay, thank you so much for this report. It was really a good one. And thanks for the information. Okay, thanks. Okay, item number 12, please.
Item number 12, introduction of ordinance for the rezoning of 1722 State Street, including recommendation B that council introduced and subsequently adopt by reading of title only, and ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Chapter 28.12 Zone Map of Title 28 of the Municipal Code pertaining to the rezoning of property in the Upper East Neighborhood.
Okay, Ms. Hummel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The staff presentation will be given by Ms. DeBusk.
Okay, Ms. DeBusk.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. The request before you today is to rezone a portion of the property located at 1722 State Street from R1 to R3. The subject property is a 28,875 square foot lot located on the east side of State Street between Valerio Street and Islay Street. The parcel currently has a split zone of C2 and R1, as shown in this slide, and has a general plan land use designation of general commerce and offices. This area of the city is developed with a mix of residential and commercial uses. Existing zoning along State Street is C2 commercial, which is indicated in this slide by the salmon color. And there's residential zoning to the northeast. To the north is single-family zoning, and to the east or south is the multifamily zoning. The back portion of the subject property is zoned R1, single-family residential, and that's the yellow color. The proposed zone change would shift the R3 multifamily zoning boundary to the north, as shown here. The zone change was initiated by the Planning Commission on November 3, 2005, and was forwarded to the City Council for approval on April 5, 2007. Staff is supportive of the proposed zone change because it is consistent with adjacent zoning, it provides adequate separation between existing commercial and residential uses, and it provides a transitional buffer between the commercial zoning along State Street and the single-family zoning to the north and east of the rezoned portion of the site. Additionally, for the proposed project, the overall density of development does not increase with the proposed rezone. Just to give you some background on the project that has been approved by the Planning Commission, contingent upon the City Council's approval of the rezone, it is a mixed-use project that contains 10 residential units, one of which is proposed to be affordable, and 8,400 square feet of commercial space. In addition to changing the density of the affected portion of the lot, R3 zoning does have different setbacks, as well as height and solar access requirements. And those are all identified in this slide. As it relates to the proposed development of the site, the rezone does not result in increased density because the 10 units that are proposed by the project could be permitted on the site without the zone change. For the specific development that's been proposed, the benefit of changing the zone has more to do with flexibility in site design and building design, and staff does believe that it results in an overall better project. With or without the proposed project, staff does believe that the zone change results in a better land use pattern than maintaining the existing R1 zone on the parcel. Based on the existing development pattern in the area and surrounding land uses, staff finds that the proposed rezone is very appropriate for this parcel and is consistent with the purposes and intent of the general plan. Therefore, staff recommends that council make the environmental findings contained in the council agenda report and introduce and adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the City of Santa Barbara that amends Chapter 28.12 of Title 28 of the Municipal Code pertaining to the rezoning of property in the Upper East Neighborhood. That concludes staff's report, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Yes, we have a speaker, speaker forum. Okay, we have, do we want applicant? Yeah, go ahead. And then we have a speaker, Mark Chapman, let's start talking. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We're kind of delighted to be here. We hope we leave delighted. I'd like to say that it's been a long haul. We've worked hard on this project for the last two years. And I think it's important that I point out that the subject of this agenda item today is not a rezone of this entire parcel, but a limited portion of that parcel. That portion is 14% of the overall property. It's at the back of the parcel. It's surrounded by eight-foot retaining walls. It's sunken topography. It's all asphalt and a dumpster at the current time. This proposal and the development has been approved by both the Planning Commission, among several reviews, Historic Landmarks Commission. We feel that the Santa Barbara process, which you all know to understand is rigorous one. And I might add that this Planning Commission was reeling from the public outcry about Chapala Street and what was going on in the community. So they were not shy about being very careful with the review of our project. We were thoroughly scrutinized. We documented everything, and I think we did a wonderful job addressing their serious concerns that were vivid at the time. One of the main things about this project is we feel it transitions wonderfully from the State Street corridor to the residential at the rear. And I think the topography of the site really helps do that. As staff has stated, the proposed rezone facilitates the superior planning of the property. It allows the community to realize benefits of all subterranean parking, a significant pedestrian paseo, which is in the best tradition of Santa Barbara, and courtyards for private and public use. There's significantly more garden and green open space relative to adjacent properties with our proposal. Now, without access and given the sunken topography of this finger of the site, which again, I remind you is only 14% of the site, it doesn't make sense to have it remain a single-family residence. And if we can't use it for a well-planned development, what would it be? It would require driveway access, vehicular access, and it would deliver things that are negative in terms of good planning. So we feel this is certainly a superior tool to address the project properly. And I really need to underscore to the council that this project fits without that, that we're not getting any additional zoning. The affordable unit is not a bonus density affordable unit. It's included in the base density. And we could have done nine units and not had any affordable, but we chose to do a stand-up project. And we worked very hard over the last two years with many agencies, staff, Planning Commission, and Landmarks Commission. Finally, I think it's, you know, with an eye towards sustainability, I think this kind of project that has integrated planning in terms of LEED certification, underground parking because of the heat island effect brings points to a LEED certification. The additional vegetation and permeability delivered to the site is a LEED progressive feature of the project. Projects that have mixed-use components and have walkability to services are another LEED earning points criteria for a project. So we're proud of that. And plus, our project plans to have solar heating. Finally, I think I'm prepared to answer all kinds of questions you might have, but I want to underscore the fact that I don't think anybody would disagree that we can improve the situation of all asphalt and an old box of a brick building with a well-planned, historically precedented project such as this. Like staff has pointed out, we have not gained anything or any additional density by dealing with this pimple of zoning aberration. So we petition the council to recognize the work we've done and correct the zoning aberration and let us move forward. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Schneider has a question for you.
Could you just, thank you, Mr. Hochhauser. I also want to state for the record that even though I was not at the site visit yesterday, I did go to the site myself. I was out of town yesterday during the site visit. So I just want to make sure that you knew that. Could you elaborate a little more about what design constraints you would have with this project if the zone change was not available to you?
Well, I'll give you my feedback on that, and staff has really articulated that well. But the ability to integrate the project is one, and have common surfaces, and the underground parking was a main feature. As I understood it, Councilmember Schneider, we couldn't utilize that portion of the site to get the additional underground parking square footage, nor could we attach the building. So, you know, all the services and mechanical systems couldn't be linked. And then this open space, because we have a very tough time accessing it, it would cost a lot of asphalt surface area to drive to the back. And certainly, we really felt strongly that a single-family residence back there would just be in a little hole of retaining walls. It's only 4,000-plus feet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Williams, and then Mr. House.
I have, I guess, a question for staff and for the designers about prospective ordinances that we are enacting. One is the energy efficiency ordinance. Does this adhere to that, even though it is not yet approved by the CE, by the CEC? I think that it's important that we look at that with prospective projects. And then I think I already asked this of Faustich, but this adheres, my understanding is this adheres to the prospective requirement that we are looking at for increasing inclusionary.
And, Ma'am Blomming and Councilmember Williams, in terms of the energy ordinance, I would have to check in on that. It hasn't, it hasn't gone in for building permits yet because it can't do this. So I think by the time this goes in for building permits, the new energy ordinance will be in effect, and they will have to meet that. They are certainly going to be required to meet the new 2007 International Building Code as adopted by the state. So that also brings some things with it. And Mr. Faustich has just confirmed with me that this will meet the direction that the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance is moving toward.
Yes, Mr. Williams, another thing that had come up during the Planning Commission hearings was the request for us to, as best we can, to try to get LEED certification on this. And while we couldn't make any promises at the time, we certainly oriented as many features as we felt reasonable to address that, so.
Okay, Mr. House?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Hochhauser, the, do you have an image at all of the existing condition on the site in this section?
Yes, I do. We have our PowerPoint presentation. If we could go to that.
No, I meant from ground level.
Yeah. These are streetscape studies of that region of State Street, but if you keep advancing the slides, I think number two, if you keep, I'm sorry, keep going forward, there's a whole series of photographs. Here we go. Advance. Keep going, yeah. Keep going.
Thank you.
Keep going. Should be more in there.
Thanks.
Well, 22 and, there we go.
And then do you have the back section there where we walked the other day?
Yeah, it'll come up. There you go.
There it is.
I see, okay. So I wanted to just ask you a couple of questions. One had to do with drainage in this area here, and I know this isn't a discussion that we're going to have to wrestle drainage to the ground. But I was just, while I was on the site, I wanted to understand how that works. I mean, are you draining to the back, draining out to the street?
No, we are draining to State Street. And one of the interesting challenges for us, as we get into our detailed working drawings, is that we've got an indoor courtyard paseo podium. And that drainage, while we'd like to take it into the subsurface of the podium, there's no storm drainage system in this portion of State Street. The nearest major storm drain is at the intersection of one block up State Street. So we're curious to work with staff to determine whether the invert, whether we can actually go uphill from that location, reach that invert, and collect all the storm water. Barring that, we would deliver it to the street through the standard-approved sidewalk drainage systems to the curb and gutter on the street.
I see, very interesting. And so the topography around the site here is at the same level as this driveway right now? And there's just big walls, or is it higher?
Either or, there's about a four to five feet drive overall over the entire site to the back. So our development terraces slightly. We actually cut in a little bit. We're well tucked in there. But we do get positive drainage from the back to the front of State Street.
I see. And then on the plan view, it looked to me like you weren't using every square inch of that space, but I'm not sure. I mean, is it, are you building out to the very edges to those walls, or are you?
No, I'm proud to say that one of the features that we incorporated is that the entire perimeter of the project...
this portion to the rest of the building and have the underground parking, you also are required to have elevators. And how did you handle your elevator situation there in terms of access from the parking into the structure and up to the upper floor?
Well, there is a public elevator that comes from the public garage to the paseo and up to the second and third floor and addresses that portion of the unit. Then some of the individual residential units have on-grade access and elevator access from the garage, private elevator.
I see. So you put private elevators and some of those...
Private and public.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to be sure that that was... I didn't see how it got resolved after the discussion. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. And we have a member of the Planning Commission here. Did you want to say anything? Yeah, come on up. Sure. Sorry, I didn't call on you earlier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Councilmembers. Bruce Bartlett from Planning Commission. The applicant was quite willing to work with us throughout this process, and I think the project has been greatly improved. We support the rezone because essentially it takes all the best characteristics, both from the R1 and the R3, and applies them. It's using the more restrictive solar ordinance that would apply to R1, even though this is essentially an R3 use. It has not increased the density of the project. The site is actually, as you saw in those slides, depressed compared to the adjacent properties. So it really diminishes the height of the structure in the back. All the parking is truly underground. It's not a basement. It's a cellar, based on our prior discussion today, so. And it does create actually a better buffer, you know, should this project not move ahead. At least the parcel is now designated R3, and you will not have commercial directly abutting the other R1 uses beyond. So I think there are a lot of benefits, and the applicant has not tried to use this to their advantage in the particular project. And I really think that it's going to be a benefit to the neighbors as well, and it's certainly consistent with the zoning in the neighborhood. So I think, all in all, this is a good thing, and it's a cleanup measure, and I think it certainly makes this project better without, you know, exacerbating, you know, density and all the other things that we were grappling with. So I think it's a win-win for the neighborhood and the project, and I hope you support it.
Okay. Thank you. We have one speaker, Mark Chapman. If you would come up, and then Mr. Horton has.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Mark Chapman. I live at 11B East Islay, directly across from above, kind of about where the "I" is. I'm not necessarily against this project. It will have significant but not unacceptable visual impact for my residents. My concern is for the greater area of the Upper East Side. I'm a hometown boy. I've seen this town grow, and I know that change is inevitable. I feel that some of these larger projects, and this doesn't seem to be all that big, should be kind of concentrated in the downtown area. And I see them kind of... It's like almost creeping into the Upper East Side. And I know that it's got a commercial strip here. My concern is Islay Street during the daytime, thankfully, I leave for work at 7:00 and come back about 6:00, but there's no time limit. And the businesses around the streets full all the time. And I think that if there was overflow parking, you could see it extending into the next block of Islay, kind of clogging up the neighborhood. I just... I hope that council will keep a close eye on any potential creeping into what is a very nice residential area. I know it well. I mean, living here all my life, but also I am the lead man for the trolley company. I take people through that beautiful area of the Upper East Side. They're very impressed by it, and as am I. It's a beautiful area, and I would like to see it preserved to the best of its ability. I understand that there is commercial usage that will be allowed and promoted. I just don't want to see it creep back too far. In this instance, I don't think that that small spur at the back is a bad use.
Okay.
I'm just thinking in terms of the future, the preservation of a very beautiful neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Because I have a question about the back finger. Just looking at this, I guess I didn't notice the height difference as we walked back there. And you mentioned that it'll be carved out or whatever. I guess I need to know what the final height is going to be in the back.
That back finger's... It's only two stories around the perimeter in the back.
Oh, is it? Okay. It's hard to tell from the other picture.
Yeah. It's only two stories. And in fact, because of the retaining walls, we're actually one story above that adjacent property in the back.
Okay.
For us initially, it was an ideal scenario in terms of tucking this in. And as I stated earlier, the Planning Commission was so excited about the transitional nature of the project, going from the frontage on State Street to the residential neighborhood behind. The topography really helped us immensely.
I was kind of concerned about the height because... But if you... If we didn't change the zoning, you still could put a house there that would be two stories.
That's correct.
So it's not... That part isn't the part. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Horton and then Mr. Burnwell.
We looked at the site yesterday, and I think it's a pretty good example of everybody working within the new guidelines and trying to cooperate with each other. So I'm going to move recommendations A and B as a staff report.
Second.
A motion and a second. Mr. Burnwell, did you have something else?
Just a little one. I think Mr. Chapman's concerns are legitimate, and we don't have them written into our ordinance, but we need... That needs to be something that should come out of our general plan discussion. While it's important at this section of State Street, it's also important at the outer State Street area where we have commercial that backs up to residential, and it backs up to true R1 residential. This residential, although there's some R1 there, we do find duplexes and other things going deeper to the east side. But the problem, and it's a big one in Los Angeles, and when you read the trade journals, you see the city of Los Angeles trying to grapple with the idea that the commercial development along, for example, Pico Boulevard and Westwood Boulevard, they have... Along their back lines, they have built tall buildings, four and five stories, immediately adjacent to the 1920s single-family residential houses. Over time, those little houses have disappeared, and the thinking has been, well, you know, let's just change the zoning and turn it into apartments and condos anyway, because it's kind of ruined as it is. So there's a creep that goes along, and then the loss of institutional memory as to what was actually there before. And I just want to say that it's a very, very important thing that we watch the backside of this commercial. I used to go to lunch with Mr. Mahan and a few other people years ago, and we had an award we used to give out for the ugliest building in town. Every month, we'd come up with a new ugliest building. And the first winner was that Bank of America building. That is clearly, for us at least, it was the ugliest building in town. So I'm really kind of glad to see it go. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'd be interested in seeing your list. Kind of interesting. Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Schneider. See your light right now.
Thank you. I also want to echo how important it is to pay special attention, especially with all the different projects we're seeing through the pipeline and looking at that neighborhood, which is a beautiful neighborhood. And it was with those eyes when I first looked at this council agenda report a couple of weeks ago, where my eyebrows were sort of going up beyond my head because there was no site visit. This isn't an appeal. This is just... The Planning Commission approved a project, but in order to get this particular project to work officially, you needed to rezone a portion of it. And so we got a project asking us to rezone something, which basically meant that we're saying okay to the project as well. And there were... The original time this was supposed to come to us, when it was agendized, there were only supposed to be four of us here, because others were at a National League of Cities Good Conference, but that was just the way it was going to be. There wasn't a full council here. We ended up having to cancel the meeting, which was... Which is actually, I think, better for me personally. And it was a project that was looking at, on the surface, upzoning an area, adding market-rate units, some of one would goes up to 2,500 square feet, looking at three stories, looking at some parking issues. And so when I read this report, I have to tell you, I was not happy with the perception of this nonchalant kind of way this was being presented to us at council, a week after the election. And especially, I mean, because that was such a huge issue during the campaign. And it was something I was very heightened sensitive to. And I know Commissioner White voted against... Commissioner White wanted this project a little more sucked in, I guess, in terms of the size of the units and whatnot. And frankly, I still think some of the size of the units are too big. Again, those are rules that we need to look into with the general plan update, but you're, you know, currently going in the rules. But having this now move forward to today, having a site visit, having that explanation, looking at the two issues that Mr. Williams brought up in terms of our energy standards, in terms of the direction we're looking hopefully to go in with inclusionary housing, that it's going to fit under those. The underground parking is very important. There are a lot of things there that really was not the way, to me anyway, presented as, oh, we just need to do a zone change so we can put a three-story mixed-use project with some parking, you know, two parking spaces modification and big luxury condos. And I just freaked out, and I said, this is not okay. And Mr. Gustafson will know until I saw him that Tuesday morning. I said, I got issues with this, and there was only four of us that were going to be here to talk about it. So I'm going to support the zone change, but I tell you that... And I don't mean for you to be the guinea pig here, but we're going to be seeing a lot of it... A lot of projects come before us or coming before the Planning Commission, and they know full well about what the issues are. And I think we just have to be extra careful that when we support this kind of zone change or whatever, that we're crystal clear about why it is that it makes sense. 14 percent of the whole unit that is R1 that's going into the other areas that fits within the neighborhood. The back area that is R1 is basically the same size of what could have been there. It's almost like a landlocked area if we kept it R1. That would have created weird design issues. The, you know, staying two stories in the back, the full project still being under 40 feet, which is another big issue in the city, I know, is a concern. So that was, you know, that made a big difference. No bonus density. I mean, those are all the things that are important to us. And so I apologize. I talked to the owner earlier today, and I apologize then for raising your blood pressure if I did. But I think it's important to us...
Very dangerous.
And I don't mean to go on some swans... You know, some big soapbox here, but we have to be extremely careful when these projects come forward, that we're really looking at the overall... What's best for the city. And I know we do that each and every day, but we want to make sure that the perception out there doesn't make it seem like we're just making some change because, you know, someone told us to, and it was just some staff report recommendation, that we really take it carefully. So I thought a lot about it, but I will be supporting the motion.
Okay. Mr. Williams?
This is one that initially I was torn between the idea that, you've heard me say before, that we shouldn't be given any breaks and discretionary breaks to projects unless they go over a certain threshold of public good. Because I think that this fulfills at least two of those, ones that I think we articulated pretty clearly, and I want to thank the applicant for doing that. Number one is complying not only with our current inclusionary rule, but the prospective modifications of expansion of inclusionary. So I also want to use you then as an example. So I'm not going to take anybody else coming in and saying that we can't adhere to those rules, because you've already shown that that's possible to do. And second, the green building aspect, which is real important to me. The third is something that maybe the project doesn't do, but I don't feel right about holding you up against, because I don't know if we've clearly articulated that a position against that. To me, the size of the units are a little bit big, and I know it's natural to do that. But I think that this council is going to need to, in an institutionalized way, reduce those unit sizes, whether that's with a impact fee levied per square foot unit or some other incentive to sort of reduce the size of a lot of these units. That being said, I don't want to hold you guys to that before we've really clearly articulated that to the community. But I want to make it very clear that I'm not going to give any more, you know, breaks on projects or vote for breaks on a project unless they, A, adhere to our incoming energy efficiency rules, B, the prospective inclusionary ordinance, and C, some measure of reasonably-sized units. But that being said, I support the motion.
Okay. Mr. Burnwell?
I just want to add one thing. Mr. Williams reminded, and Ms. Schneider both reminded me of it, but I thought, Mr. Armstrong, that we had adopted a policy that the council agenda report would address sustainability impact. And I noticed that in a couple of other ones today they did, but in this particular one, it does not. Now, I realize that there is a full discussion via the Planning Commission of the EIR, et cetera, but I still... It's... We're supposed to include in the council agenda report the sustainability impact, regardless if there's a truckload of EIRs following it. So I would appreciate it. I think the council would also, as that issue is mentioned in the agenda report, as we've asked it to be. Okay? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And if I could, before we vote on this, if I could look at the... Along State Street, there was a picture of the... Is it elevation? Yeah, the streetscape. Thank you. I knew you'd have a name for it.
That would be...
Architect there. Thought I saw it. I know. No, I think you went beyond it. No, as-built, I mean, with the drawing of it in.
Yeah, there's a slide here.
Yeah. I just... The reason I want to look at it...
That's number 16.
16. That helps them. There. Back one. There. When you look at that, and my concerns... I don't have concerns for the backside, knowing it's two stories, and I think it's a good use of that part of the land. And I like the idea of around a courtyard and that sort of thing. I love the underground parking. But when this is going to the final Architecture Board of Review look and everything, I have concerns. And you can't really see it from here, but I want that building to look not like the biggest thing that you've ever seen on that block. And I don't think it will. I'm just saying that's what we face when we put buildings... The buildings on Chappala Street. You look at it and you go, whoa. And I want people to look at that and go, oh, that's nice. That's better than that old building.
Madam Mayor, if I may interject.
Sure, go ahead.
I want to say this to the council. When we came before this Planning Commission, November of 2005, I was with my partner Jay after a thorough presentation. And the comments about the architecture and the sensitivity of the massing and the... Were so glowing that it's as if all of you were my grandmother up there, raving about our work. It was truly a wonderful day for us. It was very complimentary. We've crafted the architecture, I think, very handsomely, and I can assure you, it's going to be delightful.
Good. And you'll have your name on it. It'll be wonderful. Good. Okay. That was my only concern. Okay, we have a motion and a second to rezone the back parcel on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Good. Okay. We're going to take a quick break. Just let me look for a second. We've got Airline Terminal Project. Maybe when they set it up, we can take a couple minutes here, real quickly. Thank you. We've crafted the architecture, I think, very handsomely, and I can assure you, it's going to be delightful.
Good, and you'll have your name on it, it'll be wonderful. Good, okay, that was my only concern. Okay, we have a motion in a second to rezone the back partial on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much, and good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Good. Okay, we're going to take a quick break. Just let me look for a second. We've got airline terminal project, maybe when they set it up, we can take a couple minutes here, real quickly. Thank you.
We've met many milestones, and several important ones since the last time we updated you. As council authorized, we are moving towards completing design and permitting on the project. Schematic design and design development have been completed, and final design is underway. In September, Planning Commission approved the project development plan and the coastal development permit. At the end of schematic design, the project was generally defined concept. We knew we needed 67,000 square foot building, a two-story terminal, entry road with a ground transportation lane, and so forth, but it was at a very conceptual level. The design and site plan were somewhat fluid. During design development, the conceptual design was refined, adding detail to the site plan and landscaping. The building and site systems, such as the structural, mechanical, electrical, energy management, communications, and so forth, began to take shape. Lead-related items were identified, or considered and identified. The architectural style was developed, and the building floor plan was developed to meet the program's space requirements. During this phase, system conflicts were also identified. At the end of design development, the building and site plan now are set. We are now in final design, the final design phase, in which every detail of the project is described and documented as to how it should be built. For example, a sewer line in design development would have just been identified as a sewer line on the plans, but now in final design, we're describing it as to size, materials, how deep it'll be built, and so forth. All the detail a contractor will need to know to put the sewer line in the ground. All this design and detail and description are prepared as construction documents that are used for the project bid and construction. At the very beginning of the terminal project, council identified sustainable building design as one of the project priorities. In schematic design, we looked at strategies to integrate the building design to meet lead criteria, and we set a lead rating goal, which was silver. In design development, mechanical and lighting systems and other sustainable measures were identified, and initial modeling began. At this stage of design today, we find that the project is on track to meet lead silver, and energy analysis shows that the terminal will perform at about 18.2% better than the current Title 24. Our goal though, however, that we're still striving for through final design and further modeling is 20%. Final energy analysis will be based on final design, and the project will meet the city's new energy ordinance. We know that the new terminal building will use more energy than the existing terminal, even with all the energy efficiency built into the project. So, we're pursuing the solicitation for proposals for photovoltaics on canopy structures in the long-term parking lots, as well as completing a greenhouse gas emissions inventory and carbon footprint reduction plan, which I'll discuss in a moment. At the end of each phase of design, a cost estimate is prepared. Because each phase provides more detail about the design, the cost estimates become more reliable. At the end of design development, the project takes on another level of detail, and again we did a cost estimate that showed we're about four, there's about a $4 million difference between the project cost and the project budget. Design adjustments were made to bring the cost into alignment with the budget, just as we have done in other phases. However, I do want to emphasize that has been our objective when project adjustments are made, that we not affect the sustainable features or the quality of materials for the project. This slide just illustrates adjustments that have been made through the various design phases to bring the project into alignment with the budget. In schematic design, adjustments resulted in simplification of the architecture as well as reduction of the building size. Adjustments were again made during design development, and with the addition of ExpressJet in November, actually, space was added back into the project to accommodate the new airline. But through all these adjustments, the building size has more or less been maintained at 60,000 square feet for the new building, and then, of course, 7,000 for the historic building. This is a list of examples of design adjustments that were made at the end of design development to bring the project back into alignment with the budget. It was about $2.8 million worth of adjustments. This next slide represents kind of the hard decisions that are being made as we get kind of down to the final part of design, and this is after two rounds of pairing the project back. These are items that are very important to the project, and we are identifying them as bid alternates rather than cut them out of the project in total. The design subcommittee has worked with staff and the design team to review, comment, and make suggestions about this design, as well as other parts of the project that are being value engineered. They helped us protect the project and make sure what we're cutting out didn't really affect the quality of the final design product. The subcommittee is very enthusiastic about the project and anxious for it to be constructed. Is that an understatement? In September, the Planning Commission gave its unanimous approval of the development plan and coastal development permit. They were very complimentary about the project and encouraged the team to look at sponsors to augment the budget. We'll be returning to Planning Commission for review of the Transportation Management Plan Program, and that will kind of end our review with Planning Commission. From the very beginning, public art was a project component, and now it is becoming, as we kind of get near final design, more defined. We have met with Jenny Brush, the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission, and will be working with her and the City Arts Commission and Visual Arts and Public Places Committee to implement an airline terminal public arts program. We envision the program having two main components. One is a public arts component that will integrate art into the building architecture and the environment around the terminal building. And the other is a rotating exhibit that will have regional art once the new terminal is open. At the end of design development, the city's financial advisors reviewed and confirmed the airport's funding capacity at $63 million, and preparations now are taking place for the issuance of debt for the project. In the next few months, bond and disclosure council will be selected, and it is the intent that, to time the issuance of debt with the project bid. We are now at a critical stage at kind of marrying the project with the budget. And it's staff's and the design subcommittee's opinion that the project design has pretty much reached the limit of being adjusted and still having a viable project. Solutions that we're considering to kind of bridge this gap are bid alternatives, looking at how the project is financed and possible cost savings from that, and a sponsorship program for specific items such as passenger loading bridges in the public art. Staff will come to the Finance Committee in January to discuss some options and solutions to help bridge this gap. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, where the airport is pursuing a greenhouse gas inventory and carbon footprint reduction plan, and this is in support of council's goal for the city to meet the 2030 challenge and to offset the new terminal's increasing energy consumption. The study right now has some preliminary information. The inventory will identify the primary sources of greenhouse gas emissions associated with airport operations and propose recommended actions to reduce emissions to the 1990 levels. When the study's completed in a few months, we'll return to council with results and the recommendations from the study. This next chart just represents one of the preliminary findings. There'll be many parts to the inventory, but this is just one I wanted to share with you of the type of thing that will come out of the study. Most of the emissions on the airport are from aircraft, which is probably no surprise, distantly followed by motor vehicles, ground support equipment, and electrical usage. And 98% of the greenhouse gases are in the form of carbon dioxide. usage. And 98% of the greenhouse gases are in the form of carbon dioxide. This slide just represents a sample of the reduction strategy kind of toolbox. There are other strategies that the study will also recommend. The completed inventory and reduction plan will identify sources and associated quantities of emissions from those sources. The reduction plan will then recommend strategies to reduce the various sources associated or sources with projected quantity reductions and estimated costs and so forth. Our next steps in January, we hope to receive ABR preliminary approval, and May, complete final design and construction documents, and be in bid in August, and start construction in fall. The early parts of construction will be kind of site preparation and so forth. You probably won't see any actual groundbreaking for the building itself until probably this time next year, but we're getting close. It's getting an exciting part of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard the mayor in Seattle was telling a group of us that Boeing is developing a biodiesel jet fuel, and I thought, you know, maybe that'll help. So that's good. I don't know when it's about to come out, but that was pretty neat. Mr. House. Excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I wish to thank the airport staff and the Airport Commission for their really rolling up their sleeves and going to work on this, but in a very collaborative way. As the liaison to the Airport Commission, I've had the privilege of being at the different meetings of the subcommittee that has been working on this for a long time. And there's something, and magical is really the wrong word, it's practical, pragmatic, engaged about that, engaging about that process, that is something to be very much appreciated. This is a very large project. It's a consolidation of uses from all over the facility side of the airport. It has multiple benefits to our region as the gateway to the south coast, and so it affects not just the city of Santa Barbara, but the city of Galita, the county, and all the other jurisdictions, you know, from Santa Maria and all down to Carpinteria, who are benefiting from this. So we're looking for partners to join us, and this is part of the sponsorship thing that you heard about, to join us, and looking for opportunities to work with some of the items that have been value engineered out, or could be, to do things like provide funding or leveraged funding for additional walkways from the airplanes to the, into the terminal. Fountain that could be lost, if we don't want to lose that. These are very, very important elements of our welcoming to all of us who travel and come home, and to those who come to visit. And so I want to, first of all, appreciate this process, and I think there may be opportunities to take what we've learned from that process and apply it to our downtown transit center project that we're about to work on or begin to study. And so I'd like to see, maybe perhaps, I think we've already initiated, the idea of getting together and having a chat about that with our, with the folks that are working on that. So the last thing I'd like to say is to appreciate the spirit of cooperation that is extended, all the way to the point of having Galita representatives working with us because they're on our Airport Commission, but also to go to the Galita Chamber of Commerce and make presentation, get their feedback. This is just an opportunity for us to, once again, work cooperatively with our neighbors. And thank you very much for being so responsive to what you've heard here from council and from all the others that have participated.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Well, I just want to agree with Councilmember House. I really feel like you have listened, particularly on the preparation of this greenhouse gas inventory and carbon footprint reduction plan and the bid alternative for solar. I really feel like, you know, I've been through a lot of meetings, and every time I see an attempt, and this is really a large attempt at really dealing with my concerns, and I think some of the concerns that many on the council has had about overall sustainability. It's a tough thing to do, obviously, because it's like an airport is almost inherently difficult, not to crack, when it comes to environmentally, environmental sustainability, but I truly believe that you're headed in the right direction in addressing that. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barnwell, and then Ms. Schneider.
Yeah, ditto. Thanks to Mr. Sweeney also. We've had, I know, and we've had some meetings here in this hall in front of the council where we were hammering on this green issue, and everybody kept saying, well, we're working on it. But now I feel like we actually have, you're actually got these PowerPoint slides, which are showing us, that are analyzing all these green issues. I mean, that's what I was looking for, and I can't tell you how pleased I am with the response of, I know the architects were on it anyway, and I know you two also were, Ms. Ramsdale, but to begin to see it becoming part of the presentation that we have now, rather than kind of a, we're worried about it, we're going to be on it, but now it's part of the, part of the public presentation. I can't thank you enough for that. And just in general, I want to comment on the excellence of the airport department over the years. You're just this model department that's facing the new century and recognizing what you have to do, and doing an outreach in a very, very tricky area that's in the belly of Galita, and they don't like you there, and you've got all the, you've got all the creek concerns, and the birds, and the waterfront and everything, and it's an extremely sensitive area, has all of the tricky things going on with it, and you do it very, very well. I wanted to go back to, let me ask one question. On this tower, is that a Plunkett Tower? I can't remember it. No, it's not Plunkett. It's, who is it? Somebody. Excuse me?
Edwards and Plunkett.
It said Edwards and Plunkett. The original design, the very top part doesn't have stucco, does it? It's like clear glass. Are we going back to that? Yeah, okay. Well, I guess you got to do it. Insofar as the project cuts, the things that you may have to get rid of or that you're considering cutting, and you had a list of them up there, and I'm sure this committee's thought of these things already, but I would like to just suggest that you, that we cut out the things that are easily added later, rather than the things that are more difficultly added later. And one of them, when it was listed there, it looked like it was an escalator. I'm thinking retrofit of an escalator is going to be really expensive, so if you're going to cut something, that probably isn't one. And then some of the other ones, I'm sure you thought of that, but I just wanted to add my two cents on it. I look, I think that the elevation of the front of that building is one of the most beautiful buildings I have ever seen. It's just gorgeous. It's going to be a landmark structure. Mr. Sweeney will be able to retire with all these wonderful trophies on his fireplace, mantelpiece. It is a stunningly beautiful structure, and it has so many echoes of other renowned transportation centers in large cities, as well as keeping the Santa Barbara Spanish look to it. I just can't wait. I can't wait. Maybe I'll go out there and eat lunch once in a while, just to be around it. Thank you, though. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Horton.
I wonder if, addressing Mr. Casey here, if we could learn something from the process for, in some of the other projects that we're working on, including the general plan revision, because it seems to, this seems to have worked really well. I remember I, I think I had to sit in for the mayor in one of the first meetings out there one night. Did it with great trembling and anxiety, but it went okay, and it's continued to go great. And we get to this point, and it's, it's hard to imagine that we have this major project, and everybody seems okay with it. And if we could just do that in our general planning process and a couple of other things that we're working with right now, that would be great. So hopefully, we can learn something from this, and I think it's going to be a wonderful project.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, sitting back there. Did you want to say anything?
No answers here to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Planning Commissioner representative, and we appreciate you being here.
One thing that we haven't mentioned, I wanted to make sure to include. The team was our local staff, and it was also Mr. Sweeney, and it was really wonderful having his responsiveness and his artistic talents at hand. Unbelievable. And your staff was just amazing, being able to wield those great, gigantic drawings and everything for everybody. But it was amazing, every time it came back, you really were responding, and I've mentioned this to the thing. But Mr. Grogan from HNTB is a key player in this and has really been able to help us fulfill this. And it was truly amazing to have a representative with a huge organization like that behind him at his fingertips to be able to assist us in getting this right from an airport functionality standpoint. It's not just that it's pretty. The idea is that it's functional, and it's going to work for us into the future. And so I wanted to thank you as well, sir.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. Well, I just, I got, I got the Santa Barbara experience recently. I said earlier I was out of town, and I came back home, and I was in New York, and it was cold and snowy, and you went to LaGuardia, which was, you had to take this bus and get there hours in advance, and, you know, and you go through Denver, and it was a little delayed, and blah, blah, blah. And I got, it was late at night, and I, we landed, and you, and the door, you come out, and it was warm, and you could see the mountains, and it was just one of those beautiful, crystal-clear but warm evenings, and, you know, it smelled good. It's an airport, and it smelled good, you know, and you just walked out and went to your car, and you went home. Ten minutes later, you're home. So I understand, and I had it before, but just recently, just thinking about this, getting the Santa Barbara experience, which was good. The Arts Advisory Committee, I know the members there are very interested in, they have to figure out how to do it, but revitalizing their Friends of Public Art fundraising component, that's something that has happened on and off for many years. But I think the current membership of the Arts Advisory Committee really want to focus on how they can best do that. And what may be a great pilot, pilot project to do that, you know, in terms of getting some sponsorship and funding for the public art component of the, of the terminal. And so as you continue working with Ginny Brush and the City Arts Advisory Committee, perhaps that could be one component in terms of funding. When it comes to sponsorship issues, I'll just say, starting now, I'd be very wary about naming opportunities or anything like that. I mean, that's, especially on what we hope to be a historical building, or I don't want it to become the, you know, ex-company Santa Barbara Airport Terminal. I know you know that, but I thought I'd put that out there just now. But I think there's some good opportunities there in terms of some funding for the arts, because they're just about, they want to launch that. So that might be a good way to work with you on, on actual having a target process. So thank you very much, and I'm really excited. And also, you're just staying on, on the timeline, which is great. I mean, that's fantastic, so.
Great. Yeah, I agree. It's really wonderful, good to see it coming along, and the idea that a year from now, we will already be in construction, and it's just really good. So thank you so much, and thanks for the report. Okay. We are on item 14, which we would like to continue to January 8th. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Okay, is there a second? Well, both of you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then we are on to item 15. That's good.
Item number 15, Redevelopment Agency 2007 Annual Report.
Okay, annual report from the Redevelopment Agency. We can do this. And then we're going to have a nice break. I'm sorry, I was just looking at the clock. We're going to have a break before dinner. That's totally unusual up here. Okay, Mr. Falsted.
Madam Chair and members of the agency board, I'm Stephen Falsted, the acting Housing and Redevelopment Manager, and today we have a presentation on the Redevelopment Agency's annual report for the fiscal year that ended in June 30th of 2007, and Brian Bossy will start it off.
Okay, Mr. Bossy.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Agency Board members. My name is Brian Bossy, and I'm the Redevelopment Supervisor with the Housing and Redevelopment Division. And as Mr. Falsted just stated, we're going to run through our annual report with you today. And just as a refresher, since this is only done once a year, I just thought I'd give you a little background. This is a report that's required each year by the state. And as part of that requirement, we are here today to get your approval, our legislative body, to review the report and forward that on to the state. The report is made up of four categories that we report on. An independent financial audit by a certified public accountant or accountants, in our case. Our compliance with laws and regulations, a report on our projects and programs, and a description of our housing activities. Now, what we do is we take that and we put that into three primary components of the actual report that's submitted, and those are the State Controller's Report, our comprehensive annual financial report, and our housing, our state housing and community development report. Copies of the CAFR, or the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, have been provided to you, as well as a full package is what we send to the state has been provided in the reading file, as well as at the city clerk and in our offices. I'll start off with the financial section. And our, the agency received an unqualified or clean opinion on the presentation of our financial statements. This, again, is the result of our audit. There were no instances of noncompliance with community redevelopment law and other regulations that we're, have to adhere to, and there were no material weaknesses in our internal controls. And the CAFR, as you know, is really spearheaded by the Finance Department, and they do a wonderful job every year for us. We work with them on almost a daily basis, and they're, they're exceptional in that regard, and I can't thank them enough for all the hard work that they do. Now we'll get into our program section. This is the fun stuff. And we're going to talk about, we split it up a little. I'm going to talk about the Redevelopment Agency capital projects, and then Stephen is going to talk about the housing projects that your board has been responsible for. And this is always, before I get into it, this is always a really good exercise for us. It kind of wraps up our year, and it allows us to go back and look at what we've done, what we're doing, as well as where we're going. And I'm always amazed at the collaborative effort that goes into our projects. And that starts, obviously, with your board and the decisions, the sound decisions that you make. It then trickles down to Redevelopment Agency staff, who implement these projects on a day-to-day basis, and I can't tell you, and you know, the hard work that our redevelopment specialists put in, Jeanette Kando, Renee Brook, and Mark Aguilar, who you'll be hearing from later tonight, do a wonderful job, and I can't thank them enough. The annual report, well, let me start. Big picture, we have about 22 capital projects right now totaling over $29 million. We also have 15 community grants that we're in charge of, and that toll is just under $4 million. So we've got a lot on our plate, so here we go. First, we're going to talk about cultural arts. This, as you know, is the restoration of the Granada Theater. Cultural arts have always been an important component of our efforts to revitalize and enhance the central city redevelopment project area. I can't think of a better example than what the Granada should do for our cultural arts district, as well as the downtown as a whole. Your board has been responsible for contributing $5 million to that project. Again, it'll strengthen our arts district and the downtown. I accompanied a number of you last month on a tour of the Granada, and the pictures on the right are actually from that tour, taken by Stephen. And I think the word that I heard the most and said the most was wow. The restoration is nothing short of amazing. They are, at the conclusion of this, we'll have a state-of-the-art performing arts center, and the conclusion of that, by the way, is slated for spring of 2008.
March 6th.
March 6th of 2008. Continuing on with the cultural arts, on the upper left, the Santa Barbara Historical Museum. Your board was responsible for grant, giving them a grant of $100,000 to install high-density museum, a high-density museum-grade storage system. They were basically bursting at the seams with all the artifacts, and what this allowed them to do was put together this museum-grade storage facility, and all the rare and irreplaceable artifacts that they house there that represent the events and places and people that shaped Santa Barbara are now in good order. And again, we took a tour of that a few months ago, and it was, it was very well done. On the lower left is what will be, that's not a finished product. That will be the Community Arts Workshop, as proposed right now. And for many years, local arts groups have emphasized the lack of rehearsal space, production and set construction, as well as performance space in the community. Your board saw the need for that and directed staff to work on Redevelopment Agency property at 631 Garden Street in order to address that need. And the eventual outcome of that, we're in lease negotiations with Summer Solstice. They will be housed there, so they will have a permanent home at 631 Garden Street. That's the idea. And what we, where we're at right now, we received final approval from the Historic Landmarks Commission a few weeks ago. We've got a couple little administrative things we have to work out with them, but we plan on construction starting just after Solstice of this coming year. It's obviously a number of months, and we want, don't want to inhibit Solstice from occupying the site. So they're going to occupy it again this year, and then right when they move out, we're going to jump in on construction. On the right, another key component of our cultural arts district, and that's the Lovero Theater. Your board was kind enough to grant them a $100,000, $105,000 grant that worked, this particular grant- five thousand dollar grant that worked, this particular grant was focused on sound and making the inside, doing some sound improvements, not to the, to the microphones and things, but to keep outside sound from coming in. And what they've done is, they've put some dampers and some other things in the libero that reduce the outside sound when you're inside by about seventy-five percent. So, it'll make it a much more enjoyable experience for everybody. Our parks component, up in the upper right is Plaza de la Guerra. And you're well aware of this project. Where we're at right now, we are looking at concluding what we call our first public tour. We've gone to numerous boards, commissions. We had a great public meeting last month at the Faulkner Gallery, lots of input. What we've done is we're going around to these various groups, boards, and showing a very, very conceptual idea. And the whole point of these meetings is to just get input, just gather input from these folks. What we plan on doing is wrapping that up, that first round at the Planning Commission in late January. We'll come back to your subcommittee and eventually get back to the Agency Board with a process of how we plan to proceed from there. So, again, very, very conceptual stages of that particular project. On the lower left, twelve thirty-five, our teen center. Your board put in two hundred thousand dollars to that effort, over a third of the actual budget. The teen center includes a number of wonderful attributes, an arcade room, a lounge, a recording studio, a snack area, and even more. What it does is provide a healthy and safe environment for the teens in the downtown area. On the lower right, Plaza Veracruz. This was, if I'm not mistaken, the city's first playground. And it was enacted by City Resolution Two and a Half, well over a hundred years ago. We found that, that's one of the things you get to find out when you do these projects. So, improvements there, being led by parks, include landscaping, ADA issues, lighting, and other issues. And we'll be back to your board with parks in, it's looking like, late February. And it's due to begin construction in the spring of two thousand and eight. Downtown improvements, on your lower left, you'll recognize that building, is the nine one four State Street Public Restroom. This is a very important part of our comprehensive downtown public restroom program. It opened up in October of oh-six. And again, this report is the fiscal year, so it's last fiscal year, so that's why that's in there. Came in under budget, has a number of green elements in it, including recycled tiles, low-flow fixtures, natural light, so reduces the, the energy load on the building. And I should also mention that this was, received an award of merit from the Central Coast Chapter of the American Planning Association. Upper right is Phase Four of our State Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. That, as far as we know, is our final phase of that project, which completes improvements from the four-hundred through the twelve-hundred block of State Street. This particular phase also included some modifications on the upper block, the ten, eleven, and twelve-hundred blocks, primarily having to do with ADA access at the corners and improving those ramps for everybody. Our waterfront area projects, on the left, you have our West Cabrio, West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project. And the main goal of that project is to improve the pedestrian link between Sternsworf and the harbor. We plan on doing that by enhanced crosswalks along Cabrillo at Chapala Street, Ambassador Park, Bath Street, as well as improvement to the existing crosswalks at Castillo. In addition, we also plan on providing points of interest along Cabrillo Boulevard to pull people back and forth between the harbor and the downtown, or the, the Sternsworf side of the, the project. We are currently in the city's DART process and if all goes well, our tentative plan for construction is the fall of two thousand and eight. On the upper right and lower right are the East Cabrillo Sidewalk Improvement Project. The goal with this project is to remove and replace the severely degraded sidewalks along this very historic boulevard. It's a little over a mile worth of improvements, that sidewalk. We, in addition to that, we plan on addressing the degraded and annuded parkway areas with the combination of additional hardscape, as well as plantings where appropriate. We received final Historic Landmarks Commission approval in late September. And that, I won't go into too much detail, because that is the subject of a meeting you'll have tonight, so you'll get enough of East Cabrillo tonight. As for construction timing, our goal is to be out there in the spring of this year. It looks like about a three-month construction project, but with all our projects, we do try and make that as, expedite that as much as possible. So, that concludes the, the Redevelopment Agency Capital Projects portion. And now, I'll let Stephen take over with our affordable housing component.
Okay, Mr. Falstich.
As you're well aware, as you're well aware, the Redevelopment Agency contributes a significant portion of its income to the city's affordable housing programs. And since nineteen seventy-seven, in fact, the agency has provided over fifty-three million dollars worth of financing. And that's over fifty percent of all of the financing that we've received from state and federal and, and local sources. The affordable housing programs include several facets, the rehabilitation, acquisition of existing units and rehabilitating them, land banking for future development, and of course, new construction. As, as Brian did, I want to thank our housing programs staff, who've been instrumental in every one of the projects that you're about to see. That includes Simon Kiefer, our project planner, and Gerdro Randolph, affordable housing specialist, and Carol Carpenter, our loan officer. And without their work, we couldn't have done all of this. The first slide is a rehabilitation project. The SHIFCO project is a hundred and seven units of senior housing, one of the first projects that the city ever assisted. It was developed by a religious organization and, and eventually bought by the city's housing authority with the city funds. And they administer the hundred and seven units. But the, the ground has shifted, the earth has settled, and they have some serious issues on the site. And we provided a grant of four hundred thousand dollars for, of home funds. I'll be mentioning some sources of financing other than the Redevelopment Agency, but that's, and that's an example. Also, this is nine thirty-three.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I have a question on SHIFCO. If I could. Mr. Falstich, I know that there's going to be some repair work and so forth done to SHIFCO, as you just mentioned. But I received a comment from a resident of SHIFCO the other day, and I see Mr. Casey in the back of the room. There's a project that's happening right behind SHIFCO that is, got nothing to do with this. It's a market rate quasi-workforce project. And there is a lot of upheaval going on, on Santa Fe Road and that cul-de-sac that leads in back of SHIFCO. I'm wondering whether or not there is, there is any mitigation that the project is doing, given that this facility is, is fully, the residents are all seniors, and that there is going to be some work being done on the facility itself. Can you tell me how this is interfacing? Because there, there are some safety issues that have been brought up and brought to my attention at any rate. And I know it's not really an RDA capital improvement thing, but you're talking about a facility that has got, you know, its own deterioration problems. And it is a housing authority project funded by the RDA. And so, I'm wondering if you could just maybe talk about that a little bit for those people who are impacted by that other project as well.
Madam Mayor and Agency Member Falconi, I've been out to the site and certainly there is a lot of construction going on right there. And it's a combination of market rate and affordable, by the way, that project on Santa Fe. And interestingly-
Well, the affordable are being purchased to some degree by City College for their, for their professors, so that's why I called it quasi-market workforce.
That's right. I was going to mention that, that that's going to be a wonderful opportunity for this City College to, to be involved. And this is the first that I've heard about it. And I'm sure that if, if the housing authority, if it's brought to the housing authority's attention, that will be of great concern to them, because the, the, the safety of, of the residents there, I'm sure, is, is of primary concern. I'm not familiar with the specific, the day I was there, it, you know, there was a lot of activity, but nothing that impacted the, the site directly, so.
Yeah, I guess we just need to look into it a little bit, so.
Okay, we'll be happy to do that. So, this project, as I said, had the four hundred thousand dollars in, in federal home financing. And this is the next rehab project. It's on nine thirty-three San Pasquale. It's owned by and operated by the Santa Barbara Community Housing Corporation. It's just six units. They haven't had the income from the very low rents that are charged there to be able to afford to make necessary improvements. So, the city's loan committee approved a grant of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from community development block grant funds for the rehab of this. Another example is the acquisition and rehabilitation of this property at six thirty-three Delavina Street, which the housing authority purchased. It's eight units. And your Agency Board and the City Council actually adopted, approved a loan of seven hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in home funds. This is an example of a land-banked property. This was the former site of a single-family home that burned down. And the property was acquired with the assistance of the City Council with, by Habitat for Humanity. It's located at six eighteen San Pasquale. They hope to replicate their good project on Villa Lucero and actually build four units this time instead of three. And with the help of agency financing, actually, city home financing of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars and the city help grant, or loan, I mean, of four hundred thousand dollars. These two projects are in the four-hundred block of East Cota Street. They're across the street from one another and they also are examples of land banking. Transition House purchased the Old Mom's Restaurant property. And in the background, you can see, I think, well, that's actually a unit on top. But part of their purchase included eight units of housing that they're now using for their clients. And the property, for years, we've anticipated the opportunity to develop additional housing at the site of the restaurant here. And they're getting much closer to that. They're, they're looking now at coming, asking for pre-development funds from the city and will look into building eight affordable housing units there. And across the street, as shown in the slide at the bottom, the photo is the Hagen Printing Site. The agency loaned two million dollars to the city's housing authority. And that's a forty thousand square foot site that will represent a wonderful development opportunity for, and a portion of the, of the clients will replicate the wonderful project that we saw at El Correo, for which you received an award today. You're sure aware of the project happening under construction at seven, six seventeen Garden Street. It's happening so quickly that the, the photo at the bottom is out of date already. That, that shows the, the ground level slab, but beneath that is already all of the underground parking that has been built. And that's a project that'll provide fifty-one units, developed by Santa Barbara Mental Health Association. And the Redevelopment Agency provided a loan or grant of, I think, grant of five-point-one million dollars for that project. This is a picture, last year at this time, we showed you an artist's rendering. Now, we can show you the actual Costas Los Granadas. It's a beautiful project that's nearing occupancy. People's self-help housing created the twelve units of very low-income housing, using one-point-two million dollars in city funding. And also, it, it's on agency-owned land that we're providing for nominal rate, making that possible. This was in the lower right, groundbreaking that, that happened a while ago. And, and the rest of the photo is the, the units today. Those are the Habitat for Humanity project on Villa Lucero, three units, two hundred and forty thousand dollars in city financing. This is the beautiful seventy-five units of, of family housing developed on the Saint Vincent's site by Mercy Housing California, using eight-point-six million dollars in, in agency financing. And also, to end this, my presentation on affordable housing, the recently completed, not quite occupied, I guess they're, they're moving in now, this, this week, the senior project, ninety-five new units of senior housing, also on the Saint Vincent's site. And this, the city provided eight-point-eight million dollars. This, I've talked a lot about millions of dollars, but the city has passed the, the threshold of a hundred million dollars and has, has actually, over the years, provided over a hundred and five million dollars worth of financing to the, the thousands of affordable units, so.
Wow, I'm going to, going to have to revise my speech, because I always say seventy-something million and now we're up to a hundred and five. That's wonderful. And I, I wanted to just throw, I'm, I'm really proud of the way the city handled and, and helped the Saint Vincent's housing, you know, to get, get occupa, occupation, occupying.
Occupancy.
Occupancy, there it is. Because I know there was, it was difficult right at the last minute and people were anxious to get in and there was a lot of pressure, but I appreciated the, the professional way that was handled. Okay, Mr. Bossy. Oh, it's the end. I thought they were building a new park.
We are done. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, good. Mr. House, that's, that's got to be-
That is Chase Palm Park.
Oh, it's Chase Palm Park. There you go. Uh, Mr. House.
Uh, Madam Mayor and Mr. Bossy, um, the, one of the last remarks that was just made by Mr. Falstich was, the city has contributed over a hundred million dollars or, you know, that's, but I want to give credit where credit's due and I need you to help me with that. Where did the money that the city spent or used come from? Now, I'm asking on behalf of the public. I partially know the answer. I go through here and I see it in fragments because of the way the report. But I would like to know, what's the source of the funds that we're using? From what activity, what work, what effort, from, from whom did that come?
The, and you're speaking, or addressing the city's affordable housing funds particularly?
Well, it's affordable housing, but the whole thing. We've got, it's the whole thing, it's the package, because we've got different sources of funding for the different programs. But from where does the money come? And then, I'm asking it like, there's also monies that we provide and then we are able to match funds with other sources and we earn money and the interest on the money that we've invested and things like that. But can you give me just a, a short list of where the money comes from that we're using for all these amazing things?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member House, I'll provide you with a-
Just a sketch.
-general outlook of, of where our funds come from. The Redevelopment Agency, when it was originally initiated back in nineteen seventy-two, has roughly eight hundred and fifty acre project area, known as the Central City Redevelopment Project Area. What was done then? The property taxes at that point were frozen. Every increase in the property tax base from that point on goes back to the Redevelopment Agency. What the Redevelopment Agency is charged with doing is spending that money on projects that benefit the project area. By state law, what happens is when we receive that money each year, it is immediately divided, eighty percent, a minimum of eighty percent goes to Redevelopment Agency projects or a Redevelopment Agency fund. And twenty percent is pushed over to affordable housing. Now, you know, you, you folks all know that in the past, you have gone well above and beyond that twenty percent and have, have quite often taken, not taken, used money from the Redevelopment Agency side of things and pushed it over to the affordable housing component. So, that's a general look at how, where that funding comes from. So, it's property taxes that are then put off to this, to the county and dispersed to, back to us, to be spent in that area.
It's literally from an increase in the value of the property-
Yes.
...that's within the, the actual geographic boundary of the Redevelopment Agency.
That's correct. And the theory is, is that by reinvesting that money into that project area, property values increase. You fight blight and make your downtowns, or whatever your project area is, that much better.
Okay, fantastic. Have we ever thought of sending like a thank you card or something to the people whose property has increased in value? I mean, I just want to acknowledge that, because it's like, you know, it's kind of a cool thing that, that actually, you know, protect us from blight, that's the concept, right? And that the, that the downtown-
It's called the Granada Garage.
That's a thank you card?
It's the biggest thank you card that has ever been constructed.
Well, and I wasn't being tongue-in-cheek as much as really sincere about appreciating those who have really worked so hard to have that accomplished and that we're taking advantage of it and making even more value, even more value, multiplying the value of that by, by leveraging and other sorts of things that we're doing to, to create an ongoing benefit for the community as a whole. an ongoing benefit for the community as a whole. And now, that's going to end at some point, not too long from now. We're not, you've extended the borrowing on it so that we can go further. But there will be an end to this, this process. And I guess we're now really beginning to plan for what will happen when that occurs. And what does that planning process look like as we look forward to the days after the redevelopment agency?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member, House, that's a great question. And, and we touched a bit on that today in the Finance Committee. The redevelopment project area, excuse me, sunsets in the year 2015. What that means, as I understand it, is that we can't initiate new projects from that point on. So, what, what happens is, we're, we're done with our projects unless what's on the books. We're allowed to finish the ones that are on the books. And our tax income, our tax increment revenue will continue to come to us until such time that we have paid off all of our debts. That's currently, we have 10 years after the sunset date, so in theory, we have until 2025 to, to pay that off. But we have been very successful with our tax increment revenues and are well ahead of schedule. And it's looking like, the last I heard, around 2019, as to where we'll actually reach that milestone of, of being able to pay everything back.
But still, just to go to the point, if I may, please. What, what are we planning on for, it seems like this kind of a need that we have and that we've been addressing is not something that's going to stop when a redevelopment agency stops. So, what, what is the city doing now, or the redevelopment agency doing now, and staff, to prepare for the post-2015, it's not that long from now. I mean, time flies. And so, what's it going to look like after? And how are we planning for that?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member, House, what I can do is touch on the redevelopment agency side of things. We, we are in discussions with the California Redevelopment Association, which represents the over 300 redevelopment agencies in the state of California, and in particular, discussions with their executive director, John Shirey, looking at what happens. This is very uncharted territory there. If I'm correct, there aren't any redevelopment agencies that have actually reached their sunset date. We are one of the first, and so, it's new ground. And so, what we're trying to do is work on, work on issues of how to either extend the redevelopment agency product, project area, or at a minimum, look to the affordable housing side and keep that, at least that 20 percent coming to the city. Bigger picture, I think that's, maybe I can defer to Mr. Armstrong on that about those, those thoughts.
I can tell you, I think we're just beginning to start planning for that, and it's a huge hole. If you think about it, right now, we're receiving approximately $14 million a year in tax increment money, that, you know, and 20 percent of that goes to affordable housing. The rest goes to basically capital projects in the downtown area. And it's a huge hole to fill. One of the things we talked about today with the Finance Committee is, one of our goals first is to make sure that we use the remaining funds, I guess, to make sure that everything in that district is in good shape. So, in 2015, we haven't left any, especially infrastructure issues out there that we have to deal with. But I think, it's of serious concern to us, because it's a, you know, we've invested so much. It's the economic, economic engine of the community. And we have to figure out a way somehow, one, to maintain it, but two, to reinvest back into it to ma-, to keep it going.
Well, thank you very much. And I know it's a serious and sincere concern for all of us, and, but thank you for all the great work the staff is doing to help us get this stuff done. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. Williamson and Ms. Falcone, go ahead.
So, we have six.
Follow-up.
Six fiscal years or seven years left in the life of the agency?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Williams, let's see, the, the last fiscal year is 2015, so I can sit here and look really bad while I try to figure that out.
I'll, I'll take the, while you're calculating that.
Okay, good.
I'll take the opportunity to clear up one of the, a lot of misinformation about one of these prospective projects, which is the MTD Transit Center. Contrary to a lot of the hype out there, you know, that old phrase, "Don't believe the hype." Contrary to that hype, we are still taking public comment and, plans have not yet been submitted and reviewed by this agency, by the Planning Commission, or by MTD for that matter. And we have not chose, we are very far from having chosen a design. That being said, I also want to comment just that, because the life of the agency is, is limited, how, how mu-, have you calculated that number yet there, Mr. House?
Seven more years, because we're currently in fiscal year 2008.
But since we've already allocated things for the rest of this fiscal year, what we're really talking about is six and a half more fiscal years. Okay? So, six and a half times $2 million a year for housing is 13 million. And so, this is what I, what I'm trying to substantiate. When I talk about that, we really only have the money for two major, I'm talking about large affordable housing projects of the, you know, the things that really contribute towards this need. We really only have enough money for maybe two more significant-sized ones. So, we do need to make this money count, unless the voters in their infinite wisdom figure out some other way to provide the funds to do that. And so, that's one of the things I think we really need to, to balance here, as we're, we're coming upon a lot of discussion about size, bulk, and scale. We do want to minimize size, bulk, and scale of these projects. But keep in mind, if they're limited too much, then we're going to have, then we're going to blow all the rest of our money on small projects that really don't, in my mind, fully address the need for affordable housing in the community. So, this is something I think we just need to wrestle with. I don't think there's a, a number that is the, you know, God's truth on this matter. I'm just asking the council and staff to reflect, and the public to reflect on the fact that we, this, this is the 13 million we got left. And the, you know, the California redevelopment, the, what, CRA, and John, whom you just spoke about, remember, you were, you were there, Mr. House. I asked him, "Do we have any hope of, of continuing the agency?" He said, "No, you're at tough luck." What about continuing the 20 percent set aside? He said, "The chances are almost none." So, let's face it, this is what we've got to work with. And, and let's not try to delude ourselves that somehow it's going to magically, you know, that, that somehow we're going to be able to continue the agency. We've got to look for something else, or maximize what we can do with the remnant of the agency.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm not totally convinced, though, that finding a couple of big projects is, is necessarily the way to go. And I don't think you really meant that.
No, I'm just asking that both, you know, the public, who wants us to keep buildings small, but also wants us to provide affordable housing, realize that we also have to balance those two considerations with a limited amount of funds.
Right, right. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. Couple of things. Thanks for re-explaining where the $100 million over a 20-year period has, has come from. Shows the very long commitment by many, 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 many councils and staff, or less staff, because you stay longer, to affordable housing and to the brilliance of our city housing authority and its leaders. The trade-off that people don't understand is that, yes, although the cities that have redevelopment agencies and benefit from the tax increment to the increased value of the property, so the property increases, but we don't get that increase of property value. That goes to the owner, which oftentimes is the city, in the case of some of these properties. But what we get is the tax increment. As you said, when the redevelopment agency is formed, the tax level is frozen. So, as the value of the property goes up, the taxes that are paid on that property goes up too. And a redevelopment agency will capture all of that, with the exception of some that goes to the state, I guess. However, what doesn't, or maybe we get it all. I don't know, Mr. Casey's frowning. Um, no, he's not. Anyway, but the entity that doesn't get any, while a redevelopment agency is alive, the entity that doesn't get any is the county. They don't, because the property tax doesn't, doesn't go up to Sacramento and then come back in a divided way. So, the fact that the county has not been as adept or as able to, to get involved with the kind of affordable housing that we have is a function, very much so, of the fact that we've had all the money and they have not had the money. So, that's, that's just a fact of the way these things work. As far as continuing a redevelopment agency, I think it's very, very unlikely that we will be, we will see any scenario that allows us to continue the redevelopment agency, with one exception, and it can come about in a couple of ways. But it all has to do with Sacramento. And Sacramento, which has several, you know, half a dozen bills floated every year about how to either continue RDAs or how to create new RDAs, how to redefine what is blight, what is not blight. All of these conversations happen at the level of the legislature. And so, if we want to see relief on this issue, then we need to do it from a legislative, statewide venue. So, that's an important conversation that we need to continue having up in Sacramento with folks that are not normally predisposed to, to helping local jurisdictions necessarily, but who hopefully will see the value of helping us all to meet the mandates, such as the RDA numbers, that they levy upon us without any real way to fund that stuff. So, at any rate, that's my, my diatribe on, on the RDA and the level of extension that we may have. It's not, it's not totally out of the realm of possibility. It just hasn't happened yet. And it's true that not any have sunsetted yet. So, maybe as these come upon a sunset date, we'll get more willing ears and we'll get more cooperation from those who understand local governments up in Sacramento. I'll, I'll jump on with Mr. Williams in terms of the Transit Center and just say, "I don't know where that picture came from, or how it's been foisted into the, into the public consciousness in the way that it has, but it ain't so." I'll just say it plainly and directly. That is not a picture of a design or of anything that we, or certainly I, have ever seen before. It is not something that would ever, in its lifetime, get my favorable nod. And, and what goes into that Transit Center at this point is a matter of conceptual conversation. We were asked, "What if we were to, if we were to do something there, what would you like in it?" So, the seven of us opined for about an hour and a half, along with the MTD board members, about what we thought might be useful and so forth in a center like that. That's about as far as we've gotten. We put out something called a request for qualifications, because not everybody is qualified to do a project that complex. Not that big, but with that many components in it. So, that's where we are on that. So, please, don't say anybody's approved it, because it hasn't been approved, and it's a long way from being approved. We're not even sure what really is going to go into it, although everybody has their, their ideas. And I'm awfully glad to, to know, as we did on Correo Boulevard many years ago, I don't know, six or so years ago, we land-banked what is now the El Correo for the SROs, specifically for the SROs. We wrote an ordinance to allow SROs. We didn't have that size in our ordinance, so we had to actually craft an ordinance that allowed that size of unit. The Hagen Printing property, and of course, there's Transition House with Moms, and we know we have to keep the sign. But beyond that, the Hagen Printing Company is probably one of the most ripe opportunities for us to do some more of that. And I hope that we really do. Das is right. We have finite amount of money unless something happens down the pike and we can get another redevelopment agency going. But that involves all kinds of machinations with definitions of blight and so forth. I, I'm really very excited about seeing the project on, at the Hagen Printing Company come forward, you know, quickly. I won't say quickly, because I don't, you know, I don't know what that means in this particular sense. But that, that to me has, has tremendous potential, and I'm very, very excited about that. And amazing work. I mean, it's all terrific, amazing work. And, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Barnwell.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, I, I just want to congratulate you guys for all that you do. I think the RDAs, it's the real engine that's given Santa Barbara the luster that Ms. Janega Dykes is now marketing. And, and that is as a result of, the seminal project, I think, was Paseo Nuevo. And a, a little counter to, to Mr. Williams, I, I don't know that the Granada Garage was, was such a, just a pure gift to the, to the guys on the upper end of State Street, because I, I see the Granada Garage as, as assisting in the expanded growth that will occur up there when we get the theater done and all those other things going on. So, it's an integral part of the, of the machine and the structure of what we set up there. I, I do hope that we continue to fight to reenact what has been referred to in the trade as the son of RDA, because it, it's so important for us. But I, one of the, one of the fun things on the council is to have those meetings with the RDA money and go through and prioritize where you want to spend it, because it's kind of like the money that we give to the arts community and the, and the downtrodden, you know, where you've got this big pot of money and you just spread it out to people and things that need it. And we don't have that opportunity very often. We're always penny-pinching on so many other things. But you guys have done a fabulous job, and I, I hope you keep it up. I don't know, people are going to be on you all the time to continue to do it. But I'm really very, very proud of what the RDA has done and how it's made Santa Barbara what it is. So, many kudos to you. And one other question, doesn't the county have an R-, counties have RDAs, don't they?
They can have.
I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Yes, they, they do, but they have, county has one, and I believe the, that the city of Galita has, has one. But of course, they're relatively recent. The, the reason that the city's RDA has the ability to be so successful is that we started back in, you know, and set the property values back in the 70s. And of course, the, the tax increment, the property value increment since that time has been huge. And that's just not the case as much in, in the county, because they're so much later in, in the establishment of their agency boards.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. A couple of things, and we mentioned it briefly in Finance, I wanted to bring it out here, that, yes, it's true, RDA is sunsetting soon, and there's this, you know, what we expect to be the increment over the next several years, but there's still the threat from the state that even that money may be raided. Even through Prop 1A, which was passed by the voters, which protects general fund money, the RDAs are not part of that. And so, that could be something, and even, I think it was in today's paper recently, looking at the state budgets and where are they going to try to find extra revenues and might go back to the local governments to that, and, and under Prop 1A, which has now much more strict regulations, if, at all, where you could do that through loans and whatnot. But the RDAs are not part of that. So, that $14 million between now and the end of 2015 fiscal year is not a guarantee for sure. I mean, it's something we have to think about. The other thing, the Finance Committee's been talking about a little bit in relation to the RDA, and I know we're going to look into this, into the budget season, is the question of, as projects take a little longer and then cost more, and we sometimes have to come back to council to augment the budget for particular projects, the question is, what do the numbers look like if we use some RDA funds to temporarily add additional staff to move projects along faster? One, is that feasible? Two, does that have a beneficial financial impact back to the community so the projects end sooner? We get the value of the project at the end of it? Plus, the, it might beat the cost of rise in construction over time. And so, I know staff is looking into that as part of the budget, which I'm very excited to, to hear about. But especially, and also, if there's a potential for rating on funding, if we're moving things forward and allocate things into contracts, that, that's different than reserve set aside that's much easier pick, much more easy picking. So, I, I'm looking forward to, to moving this forward. And again, you know, this is the fun part of, of being on the city council and being a member of the redevelopment agency, as, as Mr. Barnwell was saying, is allocating things we'd love to do. And I, I wish the, the development boundaries extended a couple of blocks more up on State Street, include the Arlington. That would be nice. And over the other side of the freeway, on the west side a little more, but you know, hey, what are you going to do? That was back in the 70s. That was back in the 70s where we made that decision. But thank you very much for the report.
Okay, thank you. And thank you very much. We appreciate it. It's wonderful, wonderful news all around. Even though we're ending, it's still, all the stuff we've done is amazing. So thank you. Okay, item 16.
Madam Mayor, I think we need action to approve
Oh, did we? Oh.
So, move approval.
Recommendation A and B.
Okay, sorry. Okay, you're right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, we've got one. Motion and a second.
Right.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, I was jumping all around here. Item number 16, please.
Item number 16, conference with legal counsel, pending litigation.
Okay. And we will take a dinner break right after that, and we'll be back here at 6 o'clock. Thank you for the evening session.